Okay, I'd like to call to order the July 12th meeting of the Moscow Planning and Zoning Commission and begin with item one, which is approval of the minutes from June 28th, 2017. Are there any additions, corrections, deletions for the minutes?
I move to approve the minutes as presented.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Closed? Abstentions? Okay. Item two, correspondence. Is there any correspondence from staff?
Nothing from staff tonight.
Okay. So, item three, Transportation Commission meeting report. Joel, do you have any updates for us?
The Transportation Commission will meet four to six tomorrow in this room. The agenda contains two items which may be of interest. One is a request to vacate a portion of Rayburn Street. And the second item is a proposed change in parking, overnight parking regulations on Jackson Street between C and D Street. I don't have any further details on exactly what's contained in those. We'll find out more tomorrow. Another item which I suspect we will probably cover is some questions for the survey, which you read the minutes, I'm committed to ask the Transportation Commission a few questions about whether or not they're going to have questions on our bus system.
Oh.
So, I can't report to you on that yet because the meeting hasn't happened.
Right, right, okay, on the X bank. Yes. Okay, I guess that is it on item three. Item four, public com, is an opportunity for public comment. It's an opportunity for members of public to come and talk to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a few minutes about anything that might be on your mind related to planning and zoning that is not on our agenda tonight. So, it's not normally an opportunity to talk about the agenda items, but is there anyone who wishes to speak on anything? Okay. So, we move to item five, which is a presentation by our Public Works Director, Les McDonald. To give you just a little background, the Moscow Planning and Zoning Commission has been updating our comprehensive plan over, it's been a multi-month process. And we are chapter by chapter. And several months ago, when we were looking at chapter three, which deals with community mobility, we had some questions about street classifications and so decided, this is the first opportunity we've all been able to connect to get Les to come to our meeting and talk about the rationale behind those classifications for D, Third, and Sixth. So, thank you for coming and we'll look forward to what you have to say.
Well, you're welcome. Thanks for inviting me. If you don't mind, I'll just sit here since that mic is off.
That probably helps the conversation.
Might be a little bit easier. And last time I was here, I think I stood up there for about an hour and three quarters, so I think I'm tired. So, yes, talking about street classifications. And my thoughts for tonight were to kind of go through how streets are classified in a general sense, what some of the intents are within street classifications, how you see variation within those classifications, city by city and size by size. And then talk a little bit about some of what we have here within the city of Moscow, within our standards and how we classify streets and that type of information. So, hopefully we can answer the questions that you have. I didn't know specifically what they were, so we'll just kind of start with a general overview. If you have questions along the way that I'm not answering, just jump in and we'll try to take care of those for you.
Okay, or if that works, or we could hold them till the end if you want. And then I know there's members of the public who would be interested in asking questions too. I'm guessing. But whatever works for you best.
Well, yeah, maybe it worked best just for general flow to go ahead and get through it. And then if there's questions on specific things at the end, we can jump back to those as items. First off, I think it's important to recognize that the street classification systems vary tremendously when it comes to size of cities. And one of the things to think about is there are some general rules and general divisions of streets based on their functionality and their capabilities and their location and those types of things, but they're applied nationwide and really in other countries as well with some different names. But the intent is to be able to essentially divide streets up into different groups. And that system has to be able to function everywhere across the country. So, you're talking everything from a ten-lane interstate through LA to that small, you know, 15-foot-wide local street in some neighborhood in some small town in rural America. You've got the entire range that has to be met through the classification system. And because of that, that matter of scale really affects how they're applied within different jurisdictions. So, the street classification system you see in Seattle, or LA, or New York looks different in terms of how big each class is in terms of overall scale and size of roads and capacity as it does, you know, as compared to what happens here in the city of Moscow. Because our population's small, our city's small, our volumes are small, we're a much more condensed system in terms of distinctions between different classes. And you'll see some of that as we go through this tonight. But it's just something to think about as we're going through this is there's probably more distinction between classes in bigger environments than what we have here in the city of Moscow, just due to our scale. So, we'll talk a little bit about what the classification systems are. And generally speaking, the most commonly used system consists of these four groups, these four classes. I will tell you that there are a lot of variations upon this. There's variations just from an urban to a rural system. And just for instance, in collectors, there are rural major collectors and rural minor collectors. Not too many cities use that, but a lot of rural areas do because they see more collectors and they do arterials and principles. Generally speaking, the four classes that you see are principal arterials, which are the largest, best capacity, highest speeds, those types of things. And we'll talk about the different characteristics of these as we go through. Principal arterial followed by minor arterial, then collectors, then locals. So, it's just hierarchy from larger, higher volume, higher speeds, down to smaller, lower volume, lower speeds, top to bottom. The information that's going to follow this as we look at each of these and kind of the definitions of how you classify were derived or published by the Idaho Transportation Department, ITD. And they're pretty consistent with what I've seen in other classification descriptions and guides throughout the country. There are a lot of different variations on it, a lot of twists. Some people, like I say, change the names or they add additional classes in between. But generally speaking, we'll kind of walk you through how it's done. So, starting with principal arterials, and we do have all of these classes within the city of Moscow, just so you know. They're typically defined as any interstate that's traversing urban areas and maybe not just to urban areas or through, but actually from one to another. So, I-90, for instance, going from Seattle to the East Coast is a principal arterial when it passes through the city of Coeur d'Alene or the city of Spokane, all right? It is an interstate system. State highways also fall within that. So, in the case of the city of Moscow, we have State Highway 8 and US 95. They're both a step down from an interstate system, but they are classified as principal arterials within our network and typically would be in networks throughout the country. In terms of what they do, essentially they are meant to address major centers of activity. How can they provide service to those centers of activity? Now, it may be within a center. So, if you're within a community, you may see a principal arterial that gets you across town from one major activity to another. It may go from a city to another city. So, for instance, from Moscow to Lewiston is a principal arterial. It could go from a city to some other point of activity. Maybe it runs from, you know, from a city out to a ski resort area where you've got a lot of traffic, for instance, maybe in the Wasatch Mountains in Utah. There's a lot of ski resorts up there. So, the level of roads are a little higher because they have higher volumes, higher demands. So, it can be any number of different activities that it serves, but the idea is it essentially is going to take you from one activity center to another and beyond. As I mentioned, they are going to have the highest traffic volumes. And here in Moscow, that is truly the case. Our principal arterials consist of Highway 8 and US 95. We see as much as 20,000 to 24,000 vehicles a day in combination, both directions of traffic. On some of those are our heaviest streets in terms of volumes and it just fits the system for principal arterials. They also are meant to serve the longest trip desires. And again, that fits that previous item about serving major centers of activity. You want to get from here to Seattle, that's a long trip in terms of the road system and that's its purpose, is to get you from here to there. So, the longer trips that you see are going to be principal arterials typically. Okay, high proportion of urban travel on minimum mileage, which is a weird bit of terminology, but essentially what they're saying is because they're principal, they're carrying large volumes because they have multiple lanes and a high usage, even though there may not be a lot of miles of that road system passing through your city, because of the capacity of those roads and the tendency to draw all the vehicles to that point, they have a lot of a high proportion of the amount of vehicles traveling within the system. So, it's a high proportion of the travel in an urban setting on essentially minimum mileage. So, the next step down in the classification is the minor arterial. And minor arterials do a number of things. They're kind of that in-between, if you will, a little bit. They are intended to really interconnect to the principal system. So, if you have principal arterials in a larger community, here we're pretty much in one each direction. But when you get to places of Spokane and above, you'll see multiple principal arterials within the network. And then streets connecting those to get you from one to the next would be the minor arterial classification. So, again, they're out there to augment, as noted here, augment the arterial system, provide interconnectedness, a way for people to get from one of the principles to another. The length of the trips is a little bit less. And again, you've got to think about scale here. So, a minor arterial in Spokane, length of trip is different than perhaps a minor arterial in Moscow or Lewiston, all right? Because our length of trip across town is much shorter than it would be in Spokane, for instance. So, it's not the cross-country long distance. It's a bit shorter in the overall scheme of things. Within an urban setting, it's not necessarily the highway that takes you from one side of town to the other side of town, but it is the next step down that will take you across town or perhaps most of the way across town. A lower level of mobility. And this really refers to the capacity of the roadway system. How many cars can it actually take? And generally, the speed that's associated with that, how many vehicles can it move? And by extension, then with facilities that go in that corridor, how many bicycles, how many pedestrians can also be moved within that section? But lower than a principle. You start seeing increased access to land. And so, that may be that you may have individual driveways. And that is often the case, particularly in smaller communities. Larger communities for minor arterials are trying to do more access control and prevent driveways to individual homes on those arterials because they want to avoid the conflict of turning and backing and entering and exiting traffic. In smaller communities, it just really is not possible for the most part, just because of the nature of the land use. But it also provides opportunity to get to those commercial centers and hit the driveway to the mall or hit the driveway into industrial parks, those types of things. So, you see more of the direct land access at this level than you would see on the principal arterials, particularly as you get outside of an urban center. And the principal arterials become highways with no access and there may be some ag crossings here and there. They also provide the connection, really from the principal arterial to the rural major collectors. So, I mentioned earlier, in the rural section, collectors are often major and minor. It's the class that they typically use. Within an urban area like city of Moscow, this minor arterial will carry you to the edge of town where then you jump onto the county system, the county highway district system in some cases. And typically, then you're starting to hit the collectors out there that are going to carry you on out into the county. In terms of overall spacing on a grid system, if that's what you're fortunate to have, generally in the central business district or the more dense urban sections of town, they recommend anywhere from an eighth of a mile to a half a mile of spacing. As you progress outward from that highly densified central district, it tends to increase. So, they're saying if you're still within developed areas of the community, you want to see not more than a mile between these minor arterials. As you get to the edge of town and it becomes less and less developed, then you can go really as high as two miles separation. Now, keeping in mind, the city of Moscow, it's about four miles across. So, this kind of spacing, again, is really looking at larger urban systems than perhaps we have. We're going to be looking at probably spacing that is more in that eighth to half mile, in some cases up to a mile. You know, the two-mile limit is really beyond what we're even capable of due to our geography. Okay, next step in the system, working our way down, is a collector in an urban setting. And here we start to see much more land access available. So, a lot more situations where you've got driveways, individual homes, individual lots, individual businesses that have direct access onto the road system. So, it provides that. It also provides circulation between and amongst other collectors within segments of the community. It may be individual neighborhoods. It may be commercial zones. Maybe you've got a couple of malls that are in proximity to each other with other commercial businesses. So, those collectors tie all that together for circulation in that area. And then if you've got industrial parks, things of that nature, bigger vehicles, different loads, sometimes you'll see the collector status used there as well. A lot of areas in the urban downtowns, and I'll use Spokane as an example because a lot of people are familiar with it, many of those downtown streets are considered collectors. They don't necessarily have direct vehicular access to every lot because not every lot has a parking space, all right, or a garage. But where there is parking and access onto the lots, they serve that need. But they also are bigger and carry higher volumes in that kind of scenario. So, the collector really is kind of that do-everything type of street. You know, it's a level above local. It's not quite the going halfway across town, but it's more of, okay, how are we going to do circulation within this part of the community in whatever kind of zone you happen to be in? Distributing trips from the arterials to the ultimate destination. So, again, keeping in mind the hierarchy. If you're coming from Seattle and you're driving home to Moscow, you're on a principal arterial, you zip all the way across the state, you come into Idaho, you jump onto the local principal arterial, which may be State Highway 8. And then perhaps you go to the east side of town, you jump on a minor arterial, which is Mountain View, drift up there, jump off on, oh, pick a street, Boyd Avenue, and you're on a local, all right? Or you're on one of the collectors out there, say F Street, for instance, that carries you over to Eisenhower. And then you jump on a local street, go to your house. So, it's part of that distribution that ties, in this case, locals to minor arterials and above, just like the minor arterial tied the collector to the principal. So, you work your way into bigger and bigger pipes, if you will. It serves from the other direction, gathering all the local traffic from the individual neighborhoods, individual homes, businesses, et cetera. Put it onto the collector system and then on up into the hierarchy. And works as part, again, that local street grid and the logical street grid for circulation within a central business district, as that example I pointed out in Spokane. The next step down is the local street. Locals can have quite a bit of variation when it comes to the size, how many vehicles they carry. Not too much on the speed, but the nature of the local streets, there's quite a bit of variation as well. Again, it depends a lot on the community that you're in, you know, how drastic that variation may be. But in general, we're looking at the direct access to the budding land. So, you know, if you're sitting on Eisenhower Street, you're sitting on the local street and your access from your house right onto the street. Again, from the other end, access to the higher order system. It is the lowest level of mobility. So, the lowest speeds, typically the lowest capacity in terms of the roadway, overall lowest volume that you anticipate seeing within a network. In the city of Moscow, local streets can range from as little as 200 or 300 vehicles a day upwards of, you know, 3,000 or 4,000 vehicles per day on an average daily load. And this one's important. Generally, they are not used for the through-traffic movement. So, we're not providing the service for through-traffic. We don't want to see people cutting through the neighborhoods on local-class streets because it creates other issues, all right? That's what the collectors, that's what the minor arterials are meant to address. And you'll see a lot of communities, and Seattle's a really good one for this, where when traffic on I-5 gets snarled up and 520 is a mess, people jump off, they're looking at, okay, I'm going to go jump on Highway 99, it's a principal arterial, and that one's a mess, so I'm going to jump on, you know, another boulevard that's out there. And guess what? That's still tied up. So, hey, I'll just cut across the top of the hill, go over Capitol Hill and hit all these local streets. Well, that's a problem in the neighborhoods, you know, there's a lot of parking, there's a lot of congestion, there's those types of things. So, you start seeing things like little traffic islands and circles that are difficult to get around, chicanes in the roadway system and diverters and those kind of traffic calming movements. That's done to prevent the through-traffic movement because they are classified as local streets. So, that's generally how the classification system lays out and for the most part, how most agencies look at classification systems. Again, there's variability. Some agencies have specific things they're trying to address, and so they'll add different features or criteria into the network. But this, as I said, came from the Idaho Transportation Department a few years back. Generally, I think it's a good guide for how things are classified. So, then the question becomes, okay, what do we do in Moscow and how does it look compared to others, for instance? And how's it fit within the system? So, this is a busy chart and we will spend some time going through this, so don't try to pick it all up right at once. But this is a chart that was developed a few years back. It is a summary of the classification systems for King and Thurston Counties over in western Washington, Spokane County, and Ada County in southern Idaho. So, different urban centers in two different states with different characteristics and certainly different size. And what this shows us are the design elements, and this isn't all of them, I just kind of cherry-picked things I thought would be most germane to the discussion. But it also has then the different classes. The principal arterial, minor arterial, collectors, or collector arterials, some call them, residential access or local in our case. And then they also use this commercial-industrial access class. Now, we don't use this, and so you'll just see when we get through them through this that we really don't have anything applies. But some entities use that because they have large commercial-industrial zones, could be the warehouse district in south Seattle, things like that. And so, the rules are a little different because of the type of traffic they see being heavy, large vehicles, that type of thing. So, they have to design them a little differently. So, they've got a separate class for that. What we're going to do is just kind of walk through these line by line a little bit. And what you see in red here in the second columns under each of these categories is what we do in the city of Moscow, all right? And it starts out with arterial spacing. So, in those four entities, generally speaking, they look at a range of spacing amongst their four sets of criteria. Arterials on principals, principal arterials two to five mile spacing, something less than two miles on minor arterials and collectors, and really no applicable standards on the residential local class and the commercial industrial. In the city of Moscow, we do not have any adopted standards or requirements or policies for spacing of different classes of streets. We're just not that big. We could get in a situation where you say, hey, we want a, you know, principal arterials no more than two miles, we build two, done. So, I mean, beyond that, we're just not that large. Okay. Moving on down the line then, average daily traffic. And this is one that people often are interested in, and some entities rely heavily upon the average daily traffic volume. So, what a typical day sees over the course of a week or the course of a year for a particular street segment. And different cities, entities do it different ways, and so you'll see some variation here. But in the general sense, in these four counties, they're saying, okay, they have to be over 2,000 to qualify as a principal arterial, 2,000 vehicles a day. That's the rock bottom. If it's over 15,000, then it automatically jumps up into the principal arterial classification. Now, that conflicts a little bit with some other things, but generally speaking, you're saying, all right, these are the big streets. In our case, State Highway 8, over 15,000 people, principal arterial, there you go, 15,000 vehicles, I should say. So, for minor arterials, they don't put an upper limit on it, but again, they're saying, eh, generally speaking, over 2,000 vehicles a day. Anything less than that, it doesn't rise to the level of an arterial. Same thing for collectors, over 2,000 vehicles. They also classify for collectors, range of 2,000 to 15,000. So, you go by that 15,000 figure, they're saying, eh, it's no longer a collector. It should go up into either minor arterial or principal arterial. Then for the local streets, in some cases, they say, all right, if you're serving more than 100 homes, you'll be one class of local. Or if you have an average daily traffic between 200 and 2,000 vehicles per day, you'll be in that upper class of local. And then the lower class of local, and we do have this actually, is, okay, now you're serving less than 100 vehicles, maybe, you know, 100 homes, maybe you're on a small neighborhood with dead ends, maybe it's a cul-de-sac, things of that nature. Or you're seeing average traffic volumes under 200 vehicles. This is really small stuff, all right? So, most of them, you know, and this is not uncommon, to have two different classes of local streets in the network and how they then categorize amongst the two locals. Again, we do not have a standard set for our street classifications based on ADT. Part of that is it's hard to apply in Moscow because, you know, if our biggest street's pushing out 20, 22,000 vehicles a day down to maybe 100 vehicles a day as compared to something like Seattle where I-5's probably got 150,000 vehicles a day down to 200 vehicles. I mean, their scale is so drastically different. So, for us to then kind of narrow it down and say, all right, you know, we're only going to put collectors from 1,200 to 2750, it's just, it's a little strange, all right? So, we generally have not attempted to do that. Okay, design speed. Design speed varies a lot, as you can see here. Principal arterials anywhere from 30 to 60, minor arterials 30 to 55. You start thinking about minor arterials in Boise region, Eagle Road, some of those, 45, 50 miles an hour, pretty common. Collector streets, even down there, up in the 45, 50 at times, as low as 25 for collectors. Residential areas, 25 to 35 in both classifications. Moscow, we've toned it down a bit. We don't have any principal arterials in our standards. We've not set those because our principal arterials belong to ITD. And so, they set those standards, we don't get to say. So, you'll see all the way along on the principal arterials here because they're ITD standards, it's just NA. We don't have a standard to apply to those. For minor arterials, we place as a rule of thumb, a 35 mile an hour design speed and a 35 mile an hour speed limit. I say as a rule of thumb because it's applied, generally speaking, to new roads where we're extending and building new road systems, so we're designing it. So, at that point, we want to plan for 35 mile an hour speed limit. But there's a lot of instances of minor arterials in the city of Moscow where we don't have 35 miles an hour, it's as low as 25 miles an hour, 25, 30, 35. D Street, for instance, between Mountain View and Main Street has all three, 25, 30, 35. It depends on direction, location. It's dictated a lot in the posting by what's on the ground. So, if we have a lot of congestion, for instance, down near the highway, or if you have topography issues or windy roads, as you're climbing the D Street hill, it goes up to 30. And then as you get on the flats, it goes up to 35, straight shot, little easier to do. And then you hit a school zone and drop to 15. So, it varies. When it comes to things like principal arterials, and we have some great examples here, coming into town, we're seeing 45 on the north end. I think we're still north of Rodeo, I think we're still above 45, 55, or 60, the north end. But once you get downtown, we're down to 25. So, something that to keep in mind here is just because something is classified, one of these different, within one of these categories, and there's a speed standard, if you will, it does not mean that is always the posted speed for that roadway. And we have lots of examples just within our own community where we have a classification, but the speed that's posted is lower for various reasons. So, in terms of what we have, we're on the lower end of a minor arterial range at 35. We use 30 again as that rule of thumb. We get lower ends for collectors, and we use 25 for both classes of the residential streets. And school zones, of course, are 15 where appropriate. Horizontal curvature, I'm not going to spend a real time on this, but just to see that there's a pretty drastic range and how tight a corner is amongst the different classes, but tending to get smaller and smaller and tighter as you reduce the speed and reduce the overall capacity of the roadway. With city of Moscow, we follow what are called the ASHTO guides, which is the Association of American Safety and Highway Transportation Officials, although as known as ASHTO. They have design guidelines out there called the Green Book. That's what we go to as far as, you know, whatever. know, what are the minimum design standards for curvature, both vertical and horizontal, when we design new road systems, or somebody's designing them to build them within our community. So that's what we use, again, we don't have any standards on this commercial industrial access. Maximum grade, minimum grade, you can again see the ranges, typically, you see flatter grades on the higher-class roadways, because you got a lot of truck movement, and they don't wanna slow the traffic down with the truck grinding up a really steep grade, unless there's a separate truck climbing lane, or hill climbing lane, so 69%, pretty common on the principals, then you start rising 8 to 10, 8 to 12, 8 to 15 in some cases. We just use 10% across the board. We have a few instances out there, existing roadways, the Sixth Street Hill, for instance, that's more than 10%, I think it's more like 14 or thereabouts, there's a little bit of warp on it that jumps up to 12, so we have a few localized spots where we've gone beyond the 10%, but generally speaking, 10% works pretty well for us. We don't have a lot of topography in the heart of the city, you know, obviously, as we get further out, we start seeing more of that rolling terrain, and this becomes a little more challenging to meet, but so far, we've done pretty well with a flat 10% across the board. The minimum at half a percent is pretty common, and it really is dictated by drainage. If you have a concrete curb and gutter, the minimum slope you can put on that gutter and make it flow, because it's concrete, is half a percent, so then your road has to follow that. If you have an asphalt road with no concrete gutter, just a concrete curb, asphalt needs a 1%, so generally, that's what we look at. So half a percent if you got concrete gutters, 1% if you don't. And that's, that's pretty standard across the board. Okay, minimum roadway widths, a lot of the jurisdictions set these up based on the number of lanes, two, three, four, five, they look at the class and say, alright, a two-lane's gotta be up to 44 feet, then you start looking at three-lane, four-lane, five-lanes, they just get bigger and bigger based on the number of lanes that you have. In general, as you work your way across, from major to minor roadway systems, those dimensions start to go down, right? Instead of 56, you're 54, instead of 54, you're 32, and then they start falling off. How you do a four-lane in a 28-foot wide road section, I don't know, but it is a minimum. Now, the city of Moscow, we have some of this, in that we have adopted standards that were developed with a lot of work by the Transportation Commission, assistance from staff, ultimately worked into our, our street standards, construction standards, standard drawings, adopted by the city council a few years ago, and what you see here really is what's reflected in those standards. For minor arterials, two-lane roadway system, it is two 12-foot travel lanes and two 5-foot bike lanes for a total of 34 feet, right? That's how we get there. You add in a 14-foot wide left turn pocket, this is a three-lane configuration for us, gets you to 48 feet. On the collectors, we have the same section, two 12-foot lanes, two 5-foot bike lanes, so there's, you know, there you are, and then the only difference then is that we have a 12-foot turn lane instead of a 14-foot turn lane. That's done primarily because the minor arterials, and, you know, will cross through areas where we're seeing more truck traffic, whether it's on Mountain View, or it's in downtown, and so you want a little more space for those turning movements, you also want folks to have a bigger landing pad, if you will, when they're turning into a turn lane, whether it's in a three-lane, continuous two-way left turn lane, or something like that, when you see out on White Avenue has that, you know, speeds are up just a little, volumes are up, you know, a fair bit higher, and so if somebody's, you know, trying to land in that turn lane while they're waiting for traffic to clear in the other, other direction, gives them a little more space to operate.
Let's, those numbers are face of curb, face of curb?
That is correct. Residential streets, we have two classifications, basically, the standard residential street is 36 feet, which you'll notice is wider than either the collector or the minor arterial, which may strike you as a bit odd, but the reason for that is, again, these are two travel lanes and two bike lanes with no parking, whereas this is two travel lanes with parking on two sides. So by the time you put in the travel lanes and adequate width of parking, you actually get to a slightly wider street at 36 feet. On the 28-foot, which is the alternate local standard for us, and we only allow it in certain instances now, which is primarily for cul-de-sacs, dead-end roads, roads that are never anticipated to go further than two blocks in their life, then we do allow the 28-footer with parking on one side. Neither of the local streets has bike lanes, right, so that doesn't factor in here, it's the parking that kinda sets it, and then travel lanes. Yes, we can have parking on arterials, be it collector or minor arterials, but they then have to widen the road, and we have standards set for that, in terms of how much wider it has to be to accommodate parking on either side of those classes of roadway. So there's, you know, most likely, if you're in the urban core, and you're building a minor arterial, you're gonna have parking, right? That's just because of the nature of the neighborhood that you're in, and so then you'd see this number go up to include the parking width that's necessary, either one side or two sides. Okay? We don't have street standards for these other scenarios, you know, we're not looking to build any four-lane, five-lane roadway systems out there in the foreseeable future, and so we've not adopted any particular standards for that. Generally, the way we'd approach it, if for some reason, say, you know, White Avenue need to go from three lanes to four lanes, or something like that, we'd look at the minimum lane width requirements, and then come to a width requirement for the roadway. Okay, minimum right-of-way width, and these vary a bit, and you can see there's a lot of variation across those four counties, again, the principals are big, because they're anticipated that they're gonna be multi-lane roadway systems, fair bit of variation for minor arterials, something very, well, very similar, but slightly smaller on collectors, and then just generally shrinking after that down to residential local-type streets. Some of these get pretty small. I'm not quite sure how you fit in a roadway with parking and bike lanes and tree lawns in a 48-foot right-of-way, but we haven't been able to do that, and so we've not gone that narrow anymore. We had 50s at one time, but those have gone away.
So let's, just on the right-of-way width, where are you measuring from, inside of side, or inside?
Right-of-way is property line to property line.
Property line, so, and now that is considered the backside of the sidewalk?
It varies. Where that's located, it varies. Okay? In most of our standards today, with the exception of some of the locals, it's back of walk, minus a foot, to back of walk, walk. So we don't want the walk sitting necessarily right on the property line, because you start interfering with property pins, property corners, and then if you got any kind of slope issue, so we generally set the walks in one foot, under the new standard, so it'd be about a foot behind those walks to the property line to the property line, okay?
But do you think the, just thinking about the way streets were laid out in, in history, we have so many 80-foot right-of-ways in downtown, does that, was that a positive or a negative?
There's lots of ways, lots of ways to look at that, you know, from the residential homeowner that thinks that their sidewalk, or that their property goes way out there, there may be a surprise, because sometimes that sidewalk is not at the property line, it's maybe 10 feet off the property line, so what they see as their yard, they may not actually own, right? It's still their yard, but they may not own it. So from that perspective, we, we run into people that, you know, they come to find out where the property line is, they wanna build a fence, and suddenly, they, they realize they can't build out at the sidewalk, they've gotta come back if they wanna be on their property, right? We have ways to address that, but that's what they find. From the city's perspective, having the wider right-of-way generally is a good thing for us, because we never know what exactly we're gonna have to do within that right-of-way. Maybe we want to enhance the bike facilities and add a bike lane, maybe we wanna put in a bus stop, and we need a pullout in order to not to back up traffic, so having that extra width allows us to move the sidewalk back and pull that bus shelter and that bus pullout. It may be that we run into a situation where traffic volumes have gotten big enough that we need to add a middle left turn lane, okay? Having sufficient right-of-way to do that is, is great for us. And so, you know, from that perspective, you know, from a personal side, somewhat selfish side on my end, having bigger right-of-way makes my life a lot easier, because we can do more things within the right-of-way that the public wants us to do, and not have to go out and acquire land or easements from those neighbors in their front yards, okay? So that's where it helps. But it just depends on perspective. More right-of-way means more ground we have to maintain, right? And, you know, it has an impact on just overall system, so it varies. And generally, generally speaking, I prefer a wider right-of-way, just because it gives us more flexibility in the long term.
Do you think the narrower right-of-way, moving from that 80 down to 60, was predicated from the developer's point of view, or from the planner's point of view?
Probably both. I, you know, the, what Mills is referring to is that in, like, the Fort Russell District, and a lot of that just east of downtown portion of the city, 80-foot right-of-way was the standard, going clear back into the 1800s, right? And probably up until the 50s?
They weren't even Mormons.
40s, yeah, 40s and 50s, right? And, you know, how they originally got there, when, you know, you're running a buggy down this road in 1889, and you needed 80-foot right-of-way, I don't know, but that was what they did. And it's not uncommon, there's a lot of cities around the country that are that way. I think from the developer's side and the landowner's side, there was probably starting to be pushback as we moved into the middle of the century, and people started saying, you know, we don't really need 80, 60's adequate, 70, 50, you know, somewhere in there, so they started to shrink. And, and that's okay, I mean, a 60 is typically adequate for local streets, that type of thing. In some cases, we've gone smaller, we had a standard for a while where the 28-footer was in a 50-foot right-of-way, but the 28-foot street with a planter strip with sidewalks doesn't fit. So then we had to go on to easements on either side of that 50-foot right-of-way on the adjacent property owner's land in order to build a sidewalk. And they spanned over the property line, which then meant property pins were now in a sidewalk, which is a bit challenging if we ever have to do anything with a sidewalk, because you have to replace the pins. So, we've kinda pulled back from that a little bit, it also comes into play when you start looking at setbacks for houses, where's the building envelope, is it from the property line, is it from the sidewalk, you guys have dealt with that in the past. So, yeah, there's a lot of considerations when it, when it comes to right-of-way. What we ended up adopting, after, again, much work with Transportation Commission, and lots of kinda angst back and forth, and Joel can attest to it, we spent, I don't know, a year and a half?
At least.
Going through the, the standards, two years, I guess, before we finally came up with something that went to council, and we looked at, you know, impacts on neighboring properties, impacts on density of land, you know, where the yard is, where the setbacks are, where the sidewalks are located, what is the ability of the city to add features within that system over the years, again, like I mentioned earlier, turn lanes, you know, center right turns, bus pullout areas, bike lanes, you know, wider sidewalks, all those kind of things, maintaining true planter strips. You know, we really wanna get away from the era of building three-foot and four-foot wide planter strips and trying to put a tree in it, it just doesn't work, it destroys the sidewalks, it destroys the curbs, it just doesn't work. So maintaining, you know, an eight-foot or seven-foot planter strip as our standard then requires more right-of-way, right? So all of that went into the discussion, ultimately, what came out, the, the end of it, is that minor arterials have a 90-foot right-of-way requirement. So as we're doing new streets, new streets in new subdivisions and growing the system, 90-foot is what we'll ask for, right? So that, again, we can accommodate those turn pockets and all those other features that a minor arterial will see. As you step down a class, the 70 to 80-foot, it's 70 is the standard, if there's an area with a center left turn lane, or a left turn pocket, we wanna grow it to 80 feet to accommodate everything that's gotta fit. But that's on a limited basis, either a continuous left turn, White Avenue's a good example, or left turn pockets as you approach an arterial. The residential's are now, are just at 60. And again, we're still not 100% within 60 on our standard 36-foot wide street, because 36-foot wide, plus the planter strips, plus the sidewalks, we're actually a little bit out with the fill slopes and all that, but 60, I mean, we're within a foot, I think, but we're, we're just right there. So 60 is the standard that we have in place now. Bike lanes, as far as what others do, anywhere from four feet to six and a half feet, depending on the road classification, what jurisdiction you're in, it seems to be, you know, across the board, wherever you are, you know, putting a four-foot wide bike lane on a principal arterial seems like a disaster to me, six and a half foot bike lane on a local street would be nice, but it takes a lot of space, and so we've settled in on five-footers where we have bike lane requirements, which would be collectors and minor arterials, we do not require bike lanes on residential streets, local streets, I should say, not residential local class. If they're there, we'd make them five feet, or bigger if we can get it, typically, though, in those class streets, we're using sharrows if it happens to be a bike route. Sidewalks, there was a time in the city that we did not require sidewalks, there was a time where we required sidewalk on one side, we're still living with some of the fallout from that over the decades. For quite some time now, the last probably 30 years, we've required sidewalk on both sides, most jurisdictions do, they range from five feet to seven feet, pretty much across the board in those four counties. We have a five-foot minimum now, it used to be four feet for decades, four feet is truly not adequate when you start talking about ADA access, gotta get wheelchairs around each other, it doesn't work. So five-foot is the standard now we have in place as the minimum in the system. When it comes to minor arterials, we vary it based on the land use. So if you're in a residential zone, we require a six-footer, if you're in either commercial or industrial, we jump it up to eight feet. And the reason for that is, in those zones, you anticipate seeing either, in commercial, more pedestrians, because it's your business district, and so you want at least eight feet to be able to have all the congestion and, you know, sidewalk cafes and everything else that go on in those commercial zones, or if you're in industrial areas, there's a comfort level. When you've got semis going by on, you know, a pretty frequent recurring basis, having a little wider sidewalk allows you to get a little further away from the travel, right? So that's why you see the eight-footer in the commercial and residential zones, five-footers everywhere else. Phew, a lot of information, right? So you fill it all out, that's what it looks like. Probably some of the key things that, you know, will factor into your discussions, and some of the questions that I think you may have about minor arterial versus collector, really, are these three, which were highlighted in gray on my screen, and they look kinda, I'm not sure what color that is, salmon?
What do you think is the reason for, I mean, it seemed clearer in your first introduction to say, principal arterial, minor, and collector, but why do they use the arterial, what do we wanna do? Turn everything into arterial?
Oh, collector, collector arterial?
Yeah.
That phrase? You know, again, it's one of those things that people use different names, right? In some areas, you'll see boulevard, muse, lane, road, and something else, I mean, they have completely different naming systems. The collector, some people call it a collector arterial, some people just call it a collector, some call it a major collector and a minor collector, right? This particular chart, they called it a collector arterial. And it may just be because in a lot of jurisdictions, the scale of collectors is bigger than certainly what we experience, and so it functions even a little more like an arterial, be it collector, minor, or principal, right? Again, it's, it's kinda this generic term that's used in a whole range of, of communities. In this particular instance, the, the information that was provided, they called it collector, or collector arterial, I should say, we just call them collectors here. Okay, so where the color change occurs is really where we're seeing a difference between a minor arterial and a collector in our standards, in that rule of thumb speed limit, or design speed for minor at 35 versus collector at 30. The roadway widths on the three-lane, which is gonna be the center turn pocket or turn lane, the difference being a 14-foot turn lane versus a 12-foot turn lane, and the right-of-way, the 90-foot versus the, basically, standard 70, with the bump up to 80 where we have a turn pocket. And then on the sidewalks that we just talked about, where we have the six or eight-foot standard, the minor arterial, and the five-foot on the, on the collector. So, in the general sense of how we look at streets and how we classify them, those are the distinctions. When it comes to things like funding, doesn't matter, they're both eligible, under the federal program, the state program, minor arterial, collector, they're both eligible, doesn't matter. So there's not a lot of large distinction between these, right? If you're building a new roadway system, and you want it to be a minor arterial, the higher speed, higher capacity, higher, wider turn lanes, more right-of-way to work with is important, and that's why we have it in the standard, because you wanna make sure that that road system can serve us as a community for the next 100 years, under all those scenarios that we may see, right? So that's why you do have a distinction between minor arterial and collector for all the new road systems. And once you start looking at existing road network, everything's on the table, right? Because you work with what you've got. We may have an 80-foot right-of-way in that part of town, we may have a 49 and a half foot right-of-way in some other parts of town, we have a few of those, or 60-footers. Even for these classes, it's kinda strange, we have arterials or collectors that are 30 feet wide, and, you know, six- And, you know, Sixth Street, Third Street, portions of D Street. They're, they're in those classes, they're all thirty feet wide for a segment of the east-west run with parking on one side. Does that meet a current standard? No. Will it ever? No. And I can say that because I don't believe the city of Moscow will ever be in a position where they're going to say, just because something is classified in a certain way, we're going to go out and change the roadway system to meet that. For a lot of reasons, right? One, the impact of the neighborhood is ridiculous, but the other is financial. We can't afford to do that. We're just trying to maintain what we have, and as we build new things, meet the current standards, and do incremental upgrades on bike systems and pet systems where we can as we progress. So if Sixth Street is a collector versus an arterial or minor arterial, the speed limit is based on what the situation is. Same thing on D Street. It's a minor arterial, speed limit varies, right-of-way varies, road width varies. If we're building new, these are the standards we'll meet. But there's nothing that says that we have to go out and meet these on existing street systems just because, right? So it's an important distinction that I'm not sure everybody always understands.
Seems like access was the other-
Access.
Is the other, I mean, there's-
And, and there is-
Many driveways on all three of those streets.
Yeah, and, and all the, yeah, every, every, and it's, it's one of the interesting things about Moscow, and it's not unique to Moscow, is we have local streets, collectors, and minor arterials that go through residential neighborhoods, and they have individual driveways on every lot, right? And every one of our east-west streets is really that way in kind of the central portion of the city. And really, it's State Eight, which actually has driveways, Blue River Drive, which still has a couple, right? Every east-west street we have has driveways. Some of them are, you know, every lot, some of them are a couple of businesses, a mall, whatever it may be, and so they all have driveways. Now, what we typically do if we're seeing new street construction with, through a subdivision, and it's a minor arterial, we will restrict driveways onto the minor arterial. We will not allow them. White Avenue is a good example. What you see is a few driveways that serve large lot multifamilies, okay? But all those houses that are out there on White Avenue where it's a three-lane going through the roundabout and all that, none of them have driveways onto the street. Same thing on Joseph as you come around the corner without South Gate subdivision. There are no driveways onto the street. That was done intentionally because we want to be able to continue to carry volume and reduce the amount of congestion and points of, of potential impact. So in those instances, we said, provide access to those lots by different means. So along Joseph, there's just another street. There's one lot between two streets. They back up onto, onto Joseph, and they have a driveway access onto whatever that first street is south of Joseph, just lost the name of it. If you get further over onto White Avenue, you see alleys that serve the back of the lots, or you see private streets in some of the PUD developments that serve those houses. And so that's where there's a distinction on the new streets, is that we do set a standard on minor arterials that we do not want to see individual driveways. There are a few exceptions out there where there just hasn't been another way to address it. Collectors, we do allow. It's not necessarily what we want to do, and we try to limit them as much as we can because, again, you know, we don't want to have all those points of conflict, but, you know, it's much more flexible in that situation.
So are you, oh, are you open for questions or are you-
Well, let me just do this real quick. I've got about three maps to show you real quick, and you've seen some of these. You cannot read this map, so don't try. But this was the two thousand and ten, you can read this part, a little fuzzy, two thousand and ten Moscow Urban Area and Functional Classification Map, which was the adopted map that's approved by the state back in two thousand and three and signed by all the players. I think that's Marshall Comstock right there, was the mayor at that time. And this has the classification system that was in effect at that time. So zooming in a little bit, just some things of note, you'll see things cut off a little bit, but look at this west bypass out here. Woo! Some people might call it the Ring Road or the Orbital Distributor if you're Dan Carskyle. West side, nothing on the east side. East side, it was, really wasn't in the cards back then. That's gone through many gyrations and looks a little different today, but it was anticipated clear back in two thousand and three. And just zoom in a little bit further, and you'll see some of the major streets throughout the community. The green ones were the minor arterials, that's this SMA, M A, minor arterial versus the C, which is the collector classifications that you see on Third and Sixth, those types of things. Through campus, you can see the minor arterials zipping around on the east and north side of town.
Would you just talk about D and Sixth and Third here? Why do you think D is shown as a minor arterial as green and the other two as a purple? Let's just get into that discussion.
Why, why is that? Well, I wasn't here when this was done, so I clearly can't answer that, what they were exactly were thinking. I would suspect that they were looking at perhaps some of the nature of the roadway, the potential for extensions, maybe the overall length of what was being served in terms of activity centers, you know, highway connection to serve the north part of town. You know, State Eight was classified as a minor arterial back then, right? Which doesn't meet ITD's standard that they, that I just showed you a while ago. It should be a principal arterial, right?
Well, the interesting thing just for history is that D almost invariably had less traffic than the other two. So how do you think of that, that too?
That, that, that has to do a bit, I think, with the vagaries of a smaller system, right? And it's going to vary a lot. You know, you think about what you see around the high school today, we see eight thousand vehicles a day. Do you see that all the way along D Street? No, you don't. So there's overlap. It goes both ways, right? So, yeah, this was the classification back then and, you know, what was around for a while, and I just wanted to show you kind of what it was back then.
Don't you think it's a little odd, though? Would you agree, okay, you weren't here, maybe, I don't know, I think I was here, but it seems odd, that selection?
Well, I, I, actually, I would agree, yes. I do think it seems odd, and, and part of that is you look at Sixth Street and you think about the nature of Sixth Street going all the way across town, you know, that edge of town to edge of town aspect, it probably should have been a minor arterial. And why they didn't, I don't know.
Do you know what the volume is on D Street today, say, west of, I'm not Mountain View, of A Street?
As you, as you approach the highway out there, I think it runs in the four to five thousand range, if I remember correctly. It's, it's been a while since I looked specifically at that one, but I think it's in that range. Okay, so you've seen this one. I think Mike's probably talked you through this before. This is out of the multimodal transportation plan. This map shows the recommended functional classifications. You can see the nice red ones here and the black ones for the arterials, and we'll just zoom in a little bit here. They classified US ninety-five as a national highway, which is a separate designation. It's out there because as part of the national defense system, there are certain roadways that they've said, okay, if we have to move a missile launcher from Wyoming to Spokane, how are we going to get there? And so they designated national highways that have different standards that have to be met for overhead clearance, grades, you know, those kind of things, so that that missile launcher can make that trip, right? And there's different funding in the overall federal level for national highway systems. So in this case, our consultant recognized that, well, yeah, that is actually the federal designation, so it kind of rises above even just a principal arterial in a, you know, typical network. So they put it in as a national highway, they put State Eight in there as the principal arterial, which under the ITD standards is appropriate. They also then recommended some changes on the overall collector-minor arterial classifications. In this case, the minor arterials are the kind of yellow color, and the collectors are the greenish color that you see. So, yeah, change, obviously on Third Street that Mills was talking about a little bit, recommendation to go to the minor arterial class, I think as much as anything that had to do with the volumes that we were seeing, the connections of destinations, be it downtown urban business district to high school to East City Park to other points to the east part of town that you can get to on that route. It also had probably had to do with the fact that there's going to be some extension and connections that run you really, you know, across town. You know, more in line with D Street and its ability to extend further to the east. Obviously, Mountain View, there's extensions onto the south and connections onto the north. You know, Farm Road, when someday, whenever it gets built out there, falling into that category as well. So these were the recommendations. These are generally in line with what the Transportation Commission worked on over the years and has recommended, and that's what's within the adopted plan, the transportation plan adopted by the city council.
Before, could you go back, stay on that map a minute?
The, on Sixth Street, it didn't change classification, but isn't the volume on Sixth overall greater than Third?
At the, in, as you approach downtown, no.
Okay.
Around, around the, the high school, as I recall, the numbers are, you know, like I say, in that eight thousand range around the high school, if I remember correctly, and I think they're more in the six to five range on Sixth Street. As you head east, then that flips, right? Because, of course, right now is, well, no, you know, the Third Street doesn't go through, so people are peeling off, going north-south, a lot of them on Hayes, some of them on Blaine and other, you know, north-south connectors. And so some of that volume that we see here jumps over and goes on Sixth. So Sixth tends to maintain higher volumes as you head east, even though it's losing people, but it's also picking up more people than Third Street does and, you know, continuing on. So, yeah, the, the change in volume as you head to east.
Is there an expectation that Sixth will ultimately end up being a, a minor arterial?
I, I think it has potential for that classification. I can tell you that some of the stuff that's been done on campus is meant to offset that a little bit in terms of, let's slow the speed because we have a huge amount of pedestrian traffic and, you know, congestion there, so they want to bring that down. It is still classified in this system as a collector because it serves that purpose, right? And again, keeping in mind that just because it has a class doesn't mean it's always up here, it can be whatever's needed. It's twenty-five miles an hour through the campus, even though we normally would post it at thirty. It jumps to thirty as you, you know, head through this part of town, drops down, I think, at the twenty-five, if I remember right, going up here because it's a twenty-eight-foot wide street in Tavagor, right? So it varies. Could it be minor arterial? Sure, it could be. And again, as, you know, we, we went through on that chart, there's not a lot of distinction between the two, but there is some.
So what I'd like to do is I just kind of call on people so everybody gets a chance to, Joel?
How, how do the traffic volumes on D compare to, compare to Third and Sixth?
I think, as I recall right now, once you get away from the high school and hit east, D and Sixth are higher than Third, okay? And they're generally comparable between D and Sixth, okay? The, the oddity there is at the high school where that one jumps above the other two.
Brock?
Any idea what the current level of service is for D Street, for that stretch?
No.
A guesstimate?
We have not done a level of service analysis on the main lines. This study, when it was done in twelve, thirteen, I guess thirteen, did look at level of service at, I think, about twenty intersections around town. So it's in there. I don't recall specifically what those were on that, that particular corridor, but it's in that study, so it's something we can look at.
Mills?
Mills.
So as you know, we've, in our comp plan, we talk at some length about neighborhoods and quality of neighborhoods, and we have a number of, I think particularly lovely neighborhoods in the, in the city. We really only have one historic. You can't be historic if you're not historic, and so we have this historic center. And so what I want to do is just ask you a question. Now, I'm quoting from the Highway Functional Classification System Federal deal that you may or may not believe in. Arterials should avoid neighborhoods, it says here. They often serve, this isn't, I understand what I need talking, this is the federal government, okay? They often serve as buffers between incompatible land uses and should avoid penetration of residential neighborhoods. So what are we going to do about that? What, what, what's your suggestion, I guess? In other words, we, we know how the traffic flows. We've seen it. I don't know other cities as well. I'm often talking about Boise because Boise has this similar thing of a historic neighborhood and a bunch of people living up in the hills, and they want to go back and forth, and so Boise struggled with that same thing as you said.
Harrison Boulevard, yeah.
Yeah, Harrison Boulevard and Fifteenth and many other streets. So the, the sense is you're saying, well, we shouldn't be driving through a neighborhood. But, of course, we do. But the issue, I guess, is just how do you deal with this? We've said we want to keep our historic neighborhood. We want to honor it. We call it something, we make little brown signs there, and yet, is there some way that, do we want to encourage more traffic going through our historic neighborhood? Now, this is now, so this is not history, you can't back out of this. You're going to have to deal with, with this issue of how we, how we want to function through our most historic city neighborhood. And the district is now, it touches D slightly, it touches Third for eight or nine blocks, and now it's right there as a historic thing. So how can we help to minimize the traffic, I guess?
Did you just say it touches Third?
Huh?
It touches Third, it borders Third?
It borders Third. In other words, it runs from East, now, at this point, it runs from Hayes to basically to-
The north side of Third, yeah.
Yeah. So it's on the entire side of-
And I know it changed here recently, but it's between D-
Right, it's, it's in process right now. I think it might be with the feds at this point, but the revised Fort Russell District.
And so, the revised one, does it cross Third Street?
No.
No.
It's just on the north side.
It's on the north side.
Okay. So-
So given this thought-
Yeah, understand. And I'm very familiar with that language. Couple things. We have what we have. And by that, I mean, we have residential neighborhoods on the east side of town that have been here for a hundred years. East of that, we have further development and demands that then are placed upon the network from that traffic for further development as we continue to grow to the east. And we've been growing beyond Hayes, you know, since the sixties, right? Seventies. There are no alternative routes through those residential areas east of downtown other than those streets. And we've lost a number of them. A Street got cut off, Spotswood got cut off, Eighth Street got cut off, and so we're down to a few that have to take all the traffic east-west. D Street, Third Street, Sixth Street, State Highway Eight, Blue River Drive, a little bit of the Steiner, White Avenue. That's really what we have. You can kind of do the rodeo public thing, but that's really what we have. Many of those other streets either don't go through or, you know, have some kind of a, a blockage that prevents east-west connectivity, right? So when you look at it from that perspective, we're down to about five alternatives. No matter what we call them, they are going to serve that purpose, right? So whether you want to call it a collector or a, or a minor arterial, between those two, Third and Sixth Street, for instance, or D Street, any of those three, they're going to, their, people are going to drive them like they drive them, right? Because that is the option they have.
I know that a lot better than you do, so-
Yes, I know.
Keep that in mind. I mean, I, I watch them every day.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I know exactly, and you get to go to another town and not have to watch them. And so I, I get it, but I'm not complaining about that.
Don't, don't take any of this as, as personal. I'm not trying, you know, but, but I'm just saying that, and I understand, I understand your, where you're coming from. We talked about this a lot over the years. But my point is, and maybe I'm being too blunt about it, but those are the streets that we have to work with. We have a traffic demand, and that's what we have to work with. So they have to serve the purpose in some form.
And they do.
And they do, in some form. Okay.
The question will be whether we enhance that or whether we don't enhance that. So I guess I want to think on that.
All right. So the, the language that you pointed out in the federal definitions talks about they should not go through a neighborhood. Well, and then you talk about the historic district. Well, I think based on what you just told me, it does not go through the historic district. It borders. Third Street borders D Street, borders the historic district. Okay? If I understand correctly.
It says neighborhoods.
It said neighborhoods.
Doesn't say historic.
Everything east of Main Street right now is a neighborhood. It all is, whether you're on D, Sixth, Third, B, pick one, right? They're all neighborhoods. So we have that dilemma of how do we fit a classification system in the city of Moscow with our scale, our topography, our availability of streets, our residential nature east of downtown? How do you fit it in? And then the demand that has to be there? You know, we just don't have a lot of options, unfortunately. And so, you know, when they struggled with that, I think, when they went through this, Transportation spent a lot of time on this, you know, and over the years, a couple of times, looking at how we classify streets. You know, we talked about the, do you channel everybody into a couple of options or do you spread them all out? You know, we use the irrigation metaphor of, you know, do you do flood irrigation where every street takes up a certain amount of cars? Or do you put them in irrigation ditches and just have three or four or five, and that's what you get? Ultimately, what we got to is that flood irrigation doesn't work because of all the, the roadblocks along the way, whether they're, you know, just don't go through, or topography, or whatever it may be, and, you know, can be detrimental as well. So, yeah, is there a good answer to this? No, there probably isn't. You know, it's one of those things that, from my perspective, we have to manage traffic, we have to manage neighborhoods, we have to manage quality of life, we have to manage demand, we have to manage snow removal, we have to manage all those things with what we have east of downtown.
I have a question in terms of the impact kind of on our downtown historic district because when you look at the options, most of the flow on Sixth Street is destination campus, I would argue. I bet you 90% of the people are going to work on the avenue.
With the congestion over there, I, I agree.
Yeah. And you take, you look at Third, and so sometimes it's going down Sixth and then turning and getting gummed up at Third and, and, and Washington as if people are trying to, to go west. Or it's Third Street traffic coming there and, or the other, only option really through is to go all the way, or even the Troy Highway gums up there because most people trying to go west will end up turning left on Third. Or D Street offers a way around, you know, essentially, if you can catch Jackson and then, I'm guilty of that one all the time if I have to go west because you avoid that epicenter of downtown, which is just getting worse and worse and worse. And that is, my concern or my question is, how do we mitigate the impact of, but we already are, our downtown is already encompassed by a state highway couplet, and then all of a sudden, we're putting a principal arterial right through the middle of it, and it's absorbing probably 80% of the traffic that ends up there, no matter which one of these, except for the D Street option, there's, you know, that is where everybody ends up. And is there any thinking about how to mitigate that, particularly as the city continues to grow to the east? And we continue to approve subdivision after subdivision while not in recent years, but, you know, the growth is clearly east and it all wants to move west to go to work or shopping. How do we, how do we keep it from ruining our downtown?
Sure.
That, that's...
Well, that was, that was a question that folks here at the city started asking two decades ago, long before I got here.
Yeah, no, I, but Walter and I have gone back and forth, they should have used the railroad corridor 30 years ago to get, you know, through a legacy crossing, yeah.
Potentially, that helps a little bit in that, that right in the urban core itself.
Right.
The answer that ultimately Transportation reached was a ring road.
Right.
And we're all familiar with the history of that, right? It's been around a long time in different forms and it's got through a lot of gyrations and it's...
But now, isn't it a series of linked existing roads that they're kind of looking at?
On the northeast quadrant, yes. The southeast, southwest, northwest, it's still a circle road around the outside. In different form, different size, you know, different shape. It's, it's a huge endeavor, very, very expensive, and, you know, there's always been the question about, well, how much will people really use it to take pressure off of that Third and Washington intersection, right? Because that's, that, right out here is one of the worst spots we've got in town, and we all know it. How do you remedy that? Well, that was the solution that ultimately they reached, and then, you know, whether or not it'll ever happen remains to be seen. So if it doesn't, what do we have? Well, the study that ITD did back in 2003 said, well, you take Third Street within the couplet, you strip all the parking, you reduce the size of the sidewalks, you put five lanes in there.
And that totally cores out downtown.
It just flows through, right? And if you do that, in ITD's eyes, you can carry the volume that you need, that's the highway to carry. Now, is that a good quality of life decision for the city of Moscow? A business decision? Probably not, but in their mind, could be done. But they also recognize that that's probably not practical, so hey, pursue a ring road. That's what the report said, you know? Go keep looking at that. All right. Aside from that, though, I mean, what opportunities do we have? We've talked about maybe punching D Street through south of Rosars over to Almond. We actually own the property between the end of D Street and, and Almond now. There's some topography and you hit a T, and you have to go south to A Street.
And through Hunga Dunga?
Just a little bit towards. So you can, you can wave at the beer sign if you'd like. No, it would be just, just between Rosars and Hunga Dunga. We've looked at that before. We did preliminary layouts, you know, 10 years ago. What, what could that be? And then, okay, now you put traffic on Almond Street, you go to A. A is going to be upgraded. It's currently scheduled for construction starting in 2019 from just west of, out in the Peterson Drive area over to Holm Street and an upgrade of line between the highway and A, which will make that east-west connectivity better. The stop signs on A Street go away and becomes this flow of, of east-west traffic. So that becomes a better east-west option to downtown, right? But when you hit the east end of A, where are you going to go? You go north on Main to D? Okay, that works. Or you could go north on Almond to D if, if we did that connection. Otherwise, you're sitting on Main going southbound and, or down Jackson, you know, which doesn't help your scenario. So if you're on the north end of town, as we improve A and maybe make other connections with Almond, I would say A-D corridor is a good alternative for the north half of the city. South half of the city, you've got State Eight on the east, but once you hit the University Quadrant, there's just not much to work with, right? As you say, could the railroad corridor have been a roadway? Maybe, but how does it tie back into the highway at either ends? I mean, the south end's not bad because we've got the couplet now, but at the north end, out there, you'd come around and hit, about where the Subaru dealer was. It's kind of an odd spot, but maybe it could have been done. Too late now, unfortunately. So, yeah, we, we don't have a lot of options downtown, and that's a struggle we have because...
Because that's just going to continue to get worse.
It's just going to get worse.
Yeah.
It's just going to get worse. And what we will probably see is things like rodeo, Farm Road. When that happens, then some of that north traffic can use the, you know, the public rodeo connection around to the mall. That helps downtown, that helps D Street. Pushing people onto D Street on the north ends and D to A, that helps. The south end is a struggle, and, you know, without a ring road down there, we've got Blue River Drive. Well, east of US 95, okay, that's good. West of US 95, how do you get back?
Do you see rodeo as, do you even think about trying to figure out how to get rodeo through?
Oh, yeah.
In other words, if you're, think of the, the streets as a regular kind of a, a east-west thing, and you, you end up with a half a mile to Sixth, a half a mile to D, a half a mile to rodeo.
Yeah.
There it is. It's staring at us, and yet it would appear that we're not willing to think about rodeo as a, as an east-west something.
So you're thinking, right, right here?
Tight through the mountain.
Right here?
Yeah.
Yep. Oh, I wouldn't say we're not willing.
But it would be...
We, we've talked about this ad nauseam over the years, Transportation staff, others. The problem we've got is, again, history, that there's a string of subdivisions right in here.
Yeah.
Okay? They were all constructed with no consideration of an east-west connection. All right?
Yep.
And there's this nice little hill right in here that's, you know, PCI. So could you physically make a connection just based on topography? Yes, you could.
Right away acquisition.
And, you know, maybe someday we grow to the point that that is an answer, where we bite the bullet and say, well, you know, I'm sorry, neighborhood here, we're going to buy out three or four homes, we're going to punch, punch that road on through, but we'd have to buy land to do it. So, yeah, we've looked at that. We've looked at going a little bit further north. Britton Lane is actually set up to be able to tie into Hershey. There's a little bit of a land conservation chunk between there that might be an issue for us, but it is set up to do that someday in response to, we can't get it here.
Yes, rodeo was built wide.
It was. It's a 44, I think.
Yeah. It was built wide, probably in anticipation of someday going somewhere.
Somewhere. And, you know, we've looked at other alternatives up here, but there's enough, you know, mixed egg development up there. It's a little tough to weave through, and the topography gets really challenging, so... So, yeah, it's, it's been discussed a lot. This alignment, of course, helps that northwest quadrant and further development out in this region someday. You know, gives you a way to come off the north end of town, whether you're in town or coming from the north, and swing around to the mall area. That helps this congestion. Yeah. It's, yeah, I mean, this is something that, you know, the city has spent a lot of time thinking about, talking about, working with commissions, talking to property owners, talking to citizens, and trying to find the answers that will make everybody happy and solve the problems. And unfortunately, there's just really not a golden, you know, cup out there that says, here it is.
Go back to Sixth, though. We, we talked about earlier that D had been shown as an arterial for quite a long time, since maybe till 1985 or so. And, and you said, well, you weren't here, so, but you were here for this. Why is it that D, or Sixth is shown as a green line and D and Third are shown as yellow? What was the process there? I presume you looked over the shoulders of these famous people who came here to tell us what to do.
It's been a while now.
I don't...
Trying to call the conversations, but I think it, I think...
Do you remember, Walter, do you recall it?
No. Part of it could have been that by then, on the campus, they'd put a four-way stop at perimeter, they put a four-way stop, one back at whatever Wallace Complex is.
Yeah, I've, I've cursed about it.
They, they, and that may have been while Uworth University and else.
Not it wasn't.
So, so they were starting to choke down through traffic on Sixth. The city council, in their wisdom, made Sixth east of Mountain View a 28-foot curb-to-curb of all things.
Yep, to serve that entire neighborhood.
To, to extend Sixth east, they built it as a 28-foot street, which effectively closed off that end of it. So Sixth had tourniquets on each end of it. That might have had something to do with the designation.
Yeah, I, I think that's probably right. I think you're, I think you're probably right about that, D.
Well, that, I mean, they don't need stop signs, just try going through there once class changes.
There are still people who cut down line and through the university because it's easier than through the center of town, or quicker, rather, not easier, quicker.
Down line, okay.
Line to Sixth to D.
Oh, wow.
Or around on Ness Purse and Crowder.
What the Transportation Commission affectionately called gerbilin.
So other questions from commissioners?
That is, that is the one other alternative we haven't really talked about is, is, you know, for this southwest quadrant is the perimeter Ness Purse and either water, tailor, or suite connections. I mean, it's circuitous. A lot of it, though, is a pretty easy drive to about here, right? Because there's, you know, there's parking up here, but it's pretty wide. There's no parking on this stretch, on Facilities, and then there's parking here, but again, it's pretty wide. It gets congested up in this area when you start hitting the frats and sororities, and then a little bit down in this area. This is a little bit challenging topographically, and of course, we're all familiar with the headache here, no light. So, yeah, could you maybe improve that corridor to take a little pressure off of downtown for this quarter? Yeah, perhaps. And people are doing it.
They've got a 25 over there going off of Ness Purse, so I can tell you that you can get picked up on that for going over there. I believe that's possible.
I believe it is, too.
So other questions from commissioners? So we can give an opportunity for people from the audience to, or the public to ask questions. We'd need, it's not a public hearing, but we'd need you to come up and, so we can get you on the recording and also where you live and what your question is. Is there anybody who would like to do that or... Okay, Walter, or, yeah, just figure out, Walter had his hand up first, but whatever. I don't know everybody's name, so I'll just point.
So we go up to here?
I don't think it's working, so...
It may be recording, but I don't know.
Well, we can pull another chair up and that way, because Les, we need you to answer the question, so...
I think like, I'm Walter Hessford. I live at 1117 E Sixth Street. I met Alan and Michael, and we're between Hayes and Blaine, and in an area that often gets bottlenecked with backup traffic because of, you know, people bombing up Sixth on their way out east. And I guess our question is, you know, what, what are the consequences of these plans or thinking for the future of Sixth? I know our friends on Third have similar questions, but we would, I mean, I think I heard Yussir mention that looks like Sixth will become a, what's the term, a...
Minor arterial.
Yeah, and we would dearly love it not to happen, to remain a, because already we are overloaded with fire trucks, ambulances, as well as lots of traffic. And we're only a couple of blocks from Blaine, just like Third is only a couple of blocks from Lena Whitmore. Also, the intersection of Blaine and Sixth is a major cross area for kids going to school, as is Hayes, you know? And what we would love to see happen, I don't know, it's probably dreaming, you know, for there to be a stop sign on Hayes because traffic comes barreling down there and, you know, and they kind of start to put on their brakes in front of our house, three houses before Blaine, but it's too late. And, you know, everyone's in jeopardy there. That whole area is congested, and I know the, I understand the need for ambulances and ambulance drivers in fact to do their work, but at the same time, we too are a neighborhood, you know? Not, maybe not as old as the one Nell's works, lives in, but our, our houses date from the 30s generally in that area, and it's an old residential area, and that, that's the same issue, you know? So we just don't want to see our house become just another throughway.
So would your question be then, how do you, how do you slow down traffic, but, but up, but...
How to slow down the traffic?
Yeah.
Maybe, you know, and I understand the need for, and I worked at the university for many, I rode my bike, you know? I think most people should ride their bike to school, you know? But anyway, that's another issue. You know, far, far more people drive their car than actually need to, I think. But anyway, I think how to, how to retain, I guess the question, how we, how can we retain the residential quality and, because property value of those of us who live on Sixth, I think, is, 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 is an issue that I would ask maybe the city to, to consider in their planning. You know, thank you for your, for your work.
So, so based on this, Sixth Street stays a collector?
Yeah, collective is okay. I can see it, even though we're likely...
But you're talking about impacts, you know, like now it's a collector's...
Yeah, we would love to see the speed limit go down to 25 all the way through. Now, it changes at one point from 25 to Third. We think it would be better if it stayed at 25. And again, to have some kind of, as there is on D and on, and on Third, also on Sixth to have a stop sign on Hayes, you know, to have it the same all the way across so that traffic is, is slowed down and it's, you know, and it's, and it's flow east in this. I don't know, maybe the idea, I know a lot of people do come. I have, we have friends that live out... that live out east of town, you know? My wife has been living there since the 70s, and I thought about that, there all used to be wheat fields and all, you know? But all kinds of people use our street as a throughway instead of going out, you know, to Troy Highway or something, and we'd love to have that somehow made less, less appealing. I'm not sure if that's a question as much as a rant.
Well, we're trying to keep the rants down a little bit and just mostly focus on the questions, but...
One question I heard, Walter asking, I think, is what implications does the classification system have for things that might happen to existing streets over time, upgrades over time?
Well, as we talked about a little while ago, I'm not sure it's any drastic difference. I mean, you know, we looked at what the differences are in standards as you're applying to new streets. When it comes to the existing corridors, be it Sixth, Third, or D, you know, we work within the right of way we've got, we work within the trees that we have and the homes that are there, you know, the funding mechanisms are the same, you know, so there's, I don't know if there's any great distinctions on the existing corridors through these parts of town. To speak to your thoughts, Sixth Street has the same dilemma that Third Street has and that D Street has. Every one of them is a residential neighborhood. And it's just the, I guess, the history of development as we've expanded east and the nature of people to find the easiest route from point A to point B, that by just kind of de facto, they have become either collector arterial, and they will act that way almost no matter what we do to a certain extent. Because the Sixth Street corridor will continue to have traffic, whether we post it at 25 and call it a local or not, it will still have traffic because it is the route that people can drive to get from here to there. Third Street's the same, D Street's the same. And so, you know, it's part of that, we're kind of stuck with the, this is what we have. Now, can you do something interesting and say, "All right, let's do major traffic calming on all three of these corners, for instance, like we did in front of the middle school"? Could you do that? Yes, we could. Okay? Now, there are certain areas, particularly west of Hayes, where we get a 30-foot wide street, so there are not a lot of opportunities for traffic calming measures there, right? You could do a little at intersections where you take what is parking and do curb bulbs, so your 30-foot becomes more of a 24 at an intersection, so that might help some. You could drift the alignment from one side to the other, right? With the parking alternating sides, which, you know, it's gentle, but that helps a little as a traffic calming measure. But when you're in a 30-foot, 30-foot road section, there's just a lot, a lot of opportunity. You know, in front of the middle school, we have a much wider street to work with, right? So we can do those kind of treatments.
Could you just tell me why there is the inconsistency between Third, D, and Sixth? We don't have the stop signs at Sixth and Hayes, but Third and D both have stop signs.
Well, I think Third because so much of the traffic movement runs north-south on Hayes, right? And so, because everybody turns there because D, or because Third doesn't go through. So the natural movement is go up and down Hayes, north or south. And then it's a four-way because of that volume up there at D and Hayes. Why Sixth and Hayes is not a three-way, I don't really know. And, you know, certainly something that we could take a look at, you know? We don't do stop signs to control speed because it doesn't work, all right? In the overall corridor, all right? You may get a few houses worth that it's slower, but then they're speeding up in between, you know, the rest of it. So if we, if we looked at that intersection, it would have to be from the perspective of, is there a long delay on Hayes to turn on Sixth Street? That's what drives it. And so, you know, whether, you know, why that's that way today versus the others, you know, again, those were all in place that way when I got here, and we've not, that I know of, looked specifically at Hayes and Sixth from a stop sign perspective.
From a pedestrian's perspective there, it's very hard to get across because you can't anticipate where the cars are going to come from. Yet Walter's...
Years ago, there was a similar comment about First Street and traffic and speeds on First. The city council, in their wisdom, put in two stop signs on First. Sixth and Third picked up traffic because of it, in my guess, because it's no longer as easy to drive across First as it was. It goes back to Les's comments about channeling and flooding. By stop signing First, you took out some of the channeling and started flooding the others. All of these, you pull here, something moves over here. You make it harder for people to get through this part of town, and you're impacting people that live out east of town. So, finding the, something that pleases everybody is nigh impossible. Finding something that benefits the most people is, is what I believe city staff and hopefully the city council attempts to do.
Brock, you have...
Yeah, Madam Chair, I think one of the main reasons that we had Les come here was because we had a problem with the language being used in the comprehensive plan of certain streets going through our historical districts that were going to be labeled as a arterial. From what we have learned, I think, and it was the, it was the very first thing said, was that this language is relative. An arterial in Moscow is going to look very different than an arterial in Boise, in Spokane, and Seattle. So I think it's really important for the public and for the commission to understand that we shouldn't necessarily cringe when we hear minor arterial, principal R arterial, et cetera, et cetera, just because it's so relative, so we can have confidence that this is going to be Moscow-sized. And what we need to think of as a commission is with, what we can do with our comprehensive plan to amend it with goals that can hopefully better our scenario, is maybe we should start stepping away, back away from the language, because I don't want to make it stricter by any sense, because I don't want to tie Public Works' hands to creative solutions. So maybe what we need to think about is, how do we work with what we have to work with, as Les said, while still preserving place and character? And it's, and it's difficult. I live on Y Ave, I live on a minor arterial. It's not as pretty of a walk as going through the Fort Douglas District and things like that. However, we do have a big setback, and a big sidewalk, and we can plant some trees, and we can create a sense of place and a sense of character. So I think is, we have to start enhancing the capacity of our roadways. There are creative ways that we can think of as a commission to still preserve that character. But we should not be, we should not have that same apprehens, that same apprehension over the language that we had in our initial conversation.
I don't disagree with you in, in general. It's just that, in my view, over the years, D and Third and Sixth have all been pretty much used in a similar way, and yet, from one year to the next, they've not been designated in a similar way. And that surprises me, and I've tried to get Les to explain it, and so far, he hasn't done that. But, in other words, for a long time, D was the arterial and the others weren't. Well, I agree that the name doesn't mean too much, except that why, if they don't mean anything, why not keep them all the same?
True.
And then, so then you ask yourself, D probably has more traffic than, than either Third or D. I mean, Sixth has more traffic, and yet it's shown as a, as something somewhat different, and one wonders, why? What, you keep asking why, and, and I'm, yet, I'm not, this meeting won't have solved my question, I don't think.
And Nels, I will tell you that I think Sixth Street should be a minor arterial. I really do, because...
Well, it is, whether we like it or not, it certainly is.
True, true. But, you know, I see D and Sixth and Third as all being very similar in what they do, how they serve the community, how they serve the traffic network, the kind of volumes that they see, the neighborhoods they go through. I think they're all about the same, right? And so, yeah, should they be different? This was the recommendation that was given by the consultant at the time, adopting it. I, I probably would have made Sixth Street a minor arterial. I didn't dictate what's on this map. It was a process that everybody went through as a community, and this is where it came out.
At some point, Walter talked about gerbilin' around town, and I, that stuck with me, it was quite a little phrase. But I think gerbilin' around town is a pretty good thing. So as opposed to saying, "We can go to Spokane and look at the one-way couplets and see how one-way couplets at 40 miles an hour destroys life." And so, gerbilin', what does gerbilin' mean? It means that you slow down. There once was a time I wanted to get rid of this turn right here on, on the campus because I thought, "Well, we need to go fast." Now I think, of course, I'm older now, I think, "This is wonderful, cars slow down, you can't make that turn at 35 miles an hour."
Some people try.
And it's not that hard to use your brake in a car. So in my mind, gerbilin' through town, I think our future, that's essentially our future, whether we like it or not, and it's, it's going to be that way. I do think, just as a final thought, that the intersection at downtown, at Third, and Washington, will only get worse, I suppose. And if more traffic is brought on Third to that intersection, God help the intersection.
Or on Sixth when they turn right, or from Troy Highway down there.
Those are tough issues that I, I do exhort us to look to the edges of town to try and figure out in the next, you know, in the next decade, how to ameliorate some of that. You've talked about a couple of those things, Les. So we, I think we need to pay attention. But do you get my point about Sixth? I just don't understand why it turned out to be a different color, because I drive it all the time. I drive all those streets all the time, and they're all the same.
Well, I see a difference, Nels, in the sense that the University of Idaho is the destination, with Third, the destination is Pullman, or, you know, it's much farther away. And so, that's, that's part of the problem. I mean, part of the difference is, this has a sort of captive destination.
I agree.
And, so, I think that's why it evolved the way it did. I'm not saying it's right or wrong, but I think that, Rob, did...
And I know you want to get to some of the other public comment, I just, I wanted a very brief comment. I really liked what Brock was saying as we're looking at this relating to the comprehensive plan, and I don't remember what it says, but maybe we can get some of the language to put some context on how we deal with the classifications in our community, so that there, there's some understanding that just because it's called one thing doesn't mean that in fact it's probably going to change it. And I'm, I can't remember what the language said, but maybe we could kind of look at that at some point in time, because I think it's a really good point that you brought up.
Well, it seems like there's a tremendous difference also between going through existing neighborhoods and reclassifying streets and having standards for new neighborhoods. And, and that, I think, became more clear, and maybe it needs to be more clear in our comprehensive plan. Because, and then you, then my concern would be 20 years out, as the community continues to grow east, what happens to those classifications then? Do they take on the, the character that you sort of mentally associate with an arterial because they're trying to serve people east of town and, and kind of ruining the existing core as, as the price for that growth? And that's, you know, those are the big balancing acts, I guess. But that would be my question is, you know, down the road, you were saying that, I remember there was a proposal to just take out the parking on Third downtown and narrow the sidewalks, and then we could get the capacity going through, I remember when that hit the newspaper, and, you know? You know, and so, there's that, that classification that sort of suggests that maybe that might happen farther to the east on some of these streets if, and, and that would be probably in everybody's mind somewhat of a concern or a question.
Yeah, and I don't know that, you know, if it's a collector versus a minor arterial, if what we're seeing there is, you know, continued delays, and, you know, the city at some point said, "You know, we need to make a change," what would that change be? You know, do you take parking off some of it? The class really doesn't matter at that point. Now you're just looking at, what is the capacity of the roadway network, and how much traffic do we have to figure out how to manage? And, you know, we could do traffic calming on Third and Sixth like we did on D Street. Does that make the traffic go away as a city? No. Could it move some of it down to the highway and go around? Yes. But you'll probably also still see high volumes on all three of those corridors, because just recognize that there are very many alternatives, so they have to use it. Maybe it's slower, which helps the quality of life aspect.
And the multimodal aspect.
But the cars are still there.
Yeah.
Right, the cars are still there. You know, other alternatives are to enhance the bus system as a community, add Third routes, add weekends, add extended hours, so people have an alternative to driving their car. We are already working on enhancing the bicycle network, to put up bike routes, and all those good things over the next 18 months or so. And so, you know, that'll, those alternatives are get people out of their car into an alternative mode, so we don't have as many cars on the road creating the issues that we're talking about. Now, is that the solution to everything? No, but it's one of the puzzle pieces that we can throw out.
Right. Walter?
Les was invited here because this map was put in front of PNC as part of the comprehensive plan review. Questions were raised about why of these three streets are they not all the same one way or the other? Does this body, Les, have the ability to recommend changing any one of those three or any two of those three?
You know, I think as part...
I don't know the answer to that.
I think as part of the development of a comprehensive, comprehensive land use plan that has a mobility chapter, which is where this would show up, certainly, they can recommend that.
Yeah, community mobility chapter three.
In the ends, will the council adopt it? That's up to the council, right? I'm sure the Transportation Commission would want to weigh in on any recommendations, and they have. And I think there are, you know, there certainly are some alternatives to what's on this map that we've already plotted out, and I think some of that Mike may have shared. Recommendations from the Public Works staff that are a little bit different than what's on this plan. So, yeah, you know, I think there's room to have those discussions, and, you know, if there's, there's good reasoning behind something different, bring it forward, and the council gets to consider it. That's how it works. And, you know, everybody will weigh in, and we'll see where we end up.
Right, that's, other question, yes, and we'll go, no more, yeah. So we're asking everybody to kind of limit it to questions rather than a diatribe of comments.
Oh, but I wrote this whole big diatribe. No. So, my name's Russ Mace, I live in First and Howard, and I want to thank you all for being here, thank you for the presentations, really interesting thinking about all of this. I had a couple of questions, but I think they're related, so hopefully it won't go on too long. I mean, I guess my first basic question is, can I assume, though, that the designation of the streets as collectors or arterials or whatever is not just descriptive, but potentially also proscriptive in terms of future planning for roads, right? So that if there is a distinction between Third Street and Sixth Street as collectors or not collectors, that that will factor into the comprehensive plan in terms of like enhancements, like Nels was talking about, like the connection to Mountain View, is that? So like, if I kind of think about this, this issue of language isn't just like, "How are the streets serving us?", but also, "What is the plan down the road in terms of how we funnel traffic?", is that accurate to say that that's...
I would say that between a collector and a minor arterial, it probably does not make a difference, because with our limited opportunities, we're looking at wherever we can maintaining a grid system and as many options for, you know, particularly east-west traffic, but also north-south, but particularly east-west where we can. And so, you know, if, if A Street is one class or another class, I don't know that we then say, "Well, we're not going to make an improvement that helps overall traffic flow because of class." I doubt we'd ever do that.
So would the distinction impact the, the decision to connect Third to Mountain View? If we, that's just a separate discussion? Okay. So, I guess one of my other questions is about housing values, and if these distinctions, and particularly how the traffic flows, if this body has looked at any research, or what the research says... the research says about how the traffic flows, it could potentially impact housing values in the area. I think people could probably recognize that like the housing values for houses that have driveways on Sixth Street are going to be lower because of the higher traffic flow, at least in my perceptions. Is there any, does this body look at some of that research?
There are definitely more tasteful ways to improve the capacity of a roadway. And I think this is what Les was kind of trying to explain, you know, there are creative ways to make it more tasteful that we can examine as a body, you know, such as making sure that we have a wide buffer, making sure that buffer, you know, maybe has some trees planted and things like that, which could perhaps add value to certain property. So it can go both ways, but I definitely understand your fear about this.
Well, I guess it's not just the fear, pardon, I'm a university researcher, so I'm actually wondering not just like what our assumptions are about like how they impact values, but does this body actually look at like, is there research from other towns or this from within the town? Because you can, I mean, we can assume that, oh, maybe if we have a nice improvement, it could improve housing values, but it might not as well. So I'm just, I'm just curious about like the process that happens.
Probably that process, well, Mike, maybe you should answer it, but usually it would happen, I mean, in a sense, we're, the comprehensive plan is a synthesis from work by various departments from the city and other commissions. And so we're not at that research level. We're more at the integration level, I guess, in developing that. Does that make sense? I don't know, Mike, maybe you could.
Well, usually you'd see that analysis from realtors. So they'd have comparables, you know, of a typical house in a different area of town compared to another area. Like, we always hear that if you're located in close proximity to Fort Russell or in Fort Russell, your, you know, your sale value is going to be higher than if you're not. So, you know, they could certainly look at that information on Sixth Street and look at comparables to other areas of town. But I would venture to say it'd be pretty similar because they're close to Fort Russell as well and also in a rather, you know, a neighborhood that has historic character to it, but we don't look at that.
I just think that'd be interesting to think about that. I mean, to kind of piggyback on Mills's point too about that area between Third Street and Sixth Street, which isn't technically part of the official historic Fort Russell neighborhood, but certainly from a realty perspective is marketed as Fort Russell. And do they have higher values than what we call in our neighborhood, Soucy, the south of Sixth neighborhood, which has a distinctly different feel.
Sweet town, Soucy, right?
I think we should start calling it that. You could catch on, right? Where it has a different feel to it. It's like a different neighborhood, south of Sixth for a variety of reasons. So I'm just kind of interested in where that research would come from. And again, this is just thinking of this as a research perspective. And I was also interested in terms of schools. I know Walter had mentioned the proximity to Lena Whitmore. And actually, Third Street is not a couple of blocks away from Lena Whitmore. It is like one house width away from Lena Whitmore. There's a very small strip of duplexes that separate Third Street from Lena Whitmore, which is where my kids go to school. I'm thinking about when you do those designations, I know you mentioned earlier, like how Moscow High School increases the volume on Third Street closer to downtown, does the, do you consult with the school board or think about like, because that intersection right there of Blaine and Third in the mornings at drop-offs is already very busy and that Third Street is very, very important for drop-offs at Lena Whitmore. And so especially in terms of thinking about that connection to Mountain View and thinking about its designation as like a flow-through place, that's a very tricky intersection already. I don't know if that like comes into, at least it's busy, it's busy between, you know, seven fifty and eight twenty when there's a lot of kids around making their way there. So I just didn't know if that is also functions into the kind of these designations when you think about like, do you, are there regulations about like where you put collectors and arterials in relation to school drop-off zones and speeding zones for schools, right, where the schools don't have to slow down?
Yeah, there really aren't with respect to, you know, can you have a arterial or collector next to a school? That's really not part of the criteria. From the perspective of saying you can't do that. It's more the other way of saying that's an activity center. So you need a route to get there. Whether it's a collector or arterial, you need to get there. And so, because everybody's coming to that spot, so how do you handle that traffic volume? Well, it's one of the higher-class roadways.
But there's no designation between schools.
There's no designation between schools, but on the ground, how you then handle it physically in terms of, you know, what do you do to slow speed, make it safe for crossing and all those things, you know, that'll vary by location. But, yeah, as far as what, does that weigh into the classification system now?
What weighs in?
We have schools on minor arteries. I mean, look at the middle school, look at McDonald's, both on minor arteries. Now McDonald's at the end.
Yeah.
So we recognize that it's a different scenario. D Street going by the middle school, though, there's a lot of traffic there. You've seen treatments now that have helped that situation that we worked out with the district. Could you do something on Third Street in the proximity of Lena Whitmore along that line? Yes, you could. Particularly as you get east of Hays, it starts to widen, so there's more opportunity to do some things to keep speeds down and traffic calming.
It'd be interesting to hear a perspective from the school district because with the Third Street, the potential connection to Mountain View is a matter of like increasing the capacity, whereas in D Street in the middle school, it's like dealing with existing capacity. My last question is more actually just really out of curiosity. I moved here from a much larger city, so does this, does your office and does the committee operating from the assumption that there is a problem with traffic in Moscow? Because from my perspective, it is not.
You must move from Seattle.
Like everyone talking about being gummed, and I mean this like seriously, like if we talk about gummed up, is this about like projections in terms of future growth or is the committee operating from this assumption that there's a problem that needs to be solved?
Well, I got two questions for you. Have you heard of the downtown parking problem? Along the similar line of thought, everybody knows what I'm referring to, but essentially there's that perception of a parking problem that may or may not exist depending on your opinion. And then we facetiously say that we have a rush quarter hour.
Used to be rush minute when I lived.
Yeah, I remember rush minute, we're up to fifteen or maybe even twenty now. Yeah, you know, it's one of those things that, again, it's scaled, right? A traffic problem in Bellevue is vastly different than a traffic problem in Moscow. Is it still a problem in the minds of people driving the street? Yes.
I guess the question is, is it though? I don't know.
Yes, it is.
From the perspective of, you know, an engineer looking at traffic movements and how much delay we have, accident histories and all that, no, it's not. But recognizing the scale of community, the sensitivity of the community, quality of life of the community and what we have, it's something we still need to address. We're doing what we can to make it better. I hear from where we are.
Yeah, it's just as a question as a researcher, is the research on that question about like this problem of perception? I mean, I understand that there's probably some people, depending on where you live, that you feel like there's different problems of what the, but I mean, I guess, is the committee making decisions based on an assumption?
Every couple of years, we have a citizen survey. And so that's one of the things ever since 2002 we've tracked is parking issues. Parking and traffic throughout the community on top of a wide variety of other things.
And I think as I recall, the level of satisfaction in the top two tiers of that survey generally was in the seventy to seventy-eight range consistently over the years.
Parking's lower, traffics are, you know, traffic's decent, parking's lower, parking's usually in the fifties, I think, fifties, sixties type.
Is that publicly available? Is that on the website?
Yeah, they're all, yeah, the administration page, yeah.
You know, the other side of that, that parking thing, I know I got it, I didn't get elected, but when I ran for council, I was just saying, you know, if you don't have a traffic issue, this is a signal that we're healthy. You know, the other side of the traffic issue or the parking issue is there's no one in town. You can park anywhere you want. That's a real problem, you know?
Yeah, no, I was just curious about whether these conversations were about projected future growth or whether the perception that there's a problem now that has to be addressed.
Well, some of it is, the city just did a parking study of Main Street, of the downtown area, right?
I think there's supposed to be more coming, right?
We have done multiple parking studies throughout the years in the downtown. We look always at the downtown lots and the permit systems. I think that'll come around again for discussions. Some of the more recent stuff has to do with the development on the north end of Maine and there's been some accounts out there. And I think that's the only thing that'll last.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Very recent, Elm Street.
But to like answer your overall question, like the comprehensive plan is a forward-thinking document. So a lot of our ideas and suggestions within that plan should be based on?
They should be informed by-
Should be informed by projections, things like that. But you can't really do everything, you know? Like, life will not always be one linear projection. Things happen and it's hard to anticipate that. And that's when we have to try to get creative and come up with solutions.
That's why we're updating at mid-course the comprehensive plan that came out in 2009 and isn't due for, what is it, a ten-year or twenty? What's the cycle?
Usually it's every five years, but we grow so slowly that things don't change as, you know, quickly as larger.
So you sort of redirect the shift at those intervals, yeah.
Thank you for your time.
You wanted to ask a question?
I wasn't standing there to rush you. I'm having hearing problems, so I'm, I have to, yep, I have to see your mouth move. Okay. The difference between the three streets has been very frustrating.
Oh, could you just tell us your names?
Oh, I'm sorry. Joanne Manita, 203 South Howard, right off Third Street in Fort Russell. It's been very frustrating because we keep saying, why are they different? And Les keeps saying, it doesn't matter. And we keep saying, okay, then make them all the same. But it doesn't seem to be happening. And what you mentioned about center of activity, D Street isn't going from some center of activity to another. So that isn't the distinguishing characteristic, I don't think. It reminds me of, I was trying to think of an example, but I was remembering when we, women decided we wanted to be called Ms. instead of Mrs. And people said, well, it's the same thing. And we said, okay, call us Ms. And they kept saying, no, you're Mrs., it's the same thing. This is what, you know, we seem to be going through. If it doesn't matter, they should all be the same. And they should, I think, all be collectors because we don't want to follow the advice of the feds and we don't want to put arterials through neighborhoods. And that's the core neighborhood of Moscow. I don't think we can count, as Walter says, and see how many people would benefit by being able to drive right through the neighborhoods as opposed to how many people live there. I don't think that's the way we want to make that decision. But I'm asking you, how do you want to make that decision? Do you want to honor what we say we value in Moscow, which is having pedestrian, safe streets for pedestrians that invite pedestrians, which is what Third Street is, safety for our schools? Do we want to have a quality of life that attracts people and keep people? Is that what we want? Or do we want to figure out the fastest way to get cars from east to west? And my third question is, what's wrong with slowing down traffic by putting four-way stop signs? We need one on Hays and Third or Third and Blaine, one of those places where the children are crossing. We need one on F and Mountain View. We need one on Sixth and Hays. I think we, do you as a planning commission step back from that because you think it's going to slow down traffic? Or do you go forward thinking we're making our community safer? Those are my points. Thank you. Any answers?
Go ahead, Rob.
Maybe Joel could weigh in on this because sometimes I get a little confused about what is the planning and zoning responsibility, what the Transportation Commission, and I know we work together, obviously, why you report to us at each meeting, but it seems like it isn't just this body that makes this decision.
I'm not saying just, but you, what's your, what are you stepping forward and saying and passing it on to the other commissions, passing it on to staff and passing it on to council?
Well, and I think that's why we're doing this comprehensive plan review and trying to incorporate our understanding of transportation issues. So I think that we're in the midst of trying to sort through a lot of that.
I mean, we called, we asked, invited Les to come today because we, and I think, you know, we're going through it chapter by chapter each time we meet and we're on chapter five, I think, at some point tonight. But back when we were on chapter three, we realized we had a lot of questions that needed answering. And it's not that, it's an iterative process. I mean, we're going through it once each chapter by chapter and collecting questions and trying to get the discussion informed and then going, we go back again and look at those revisions. So we do this multiple times. I mean, it's, or conditions.
I think what's, what's going to happen as the comprehensive plan continues its revision process, there will be a number of commissions who will want to look at particular aspects of the comprehensive plan. It's definitely true that the, this particular section should be looked at by the Transportation Commission. And I'm sure we will have some opinions very similar to what's been reflected in this meeting.
Right, and the other thing we do is we have, when we have enough time in our meetings, we have a session called Shared Readings where we try to select relevant topics that help inform whatever is on the table in front of us. And we have economic development as our next chapter in the comprehensive plan to look at. So we had various articles about economic development in downtown areas, for example, or, and classification of streets was another one that we looked at, you know, in one of our shared readings.
And part of the process for us is hearing from you as well. I mean, that's what is so important about hearing what you have to say so that it becomes a part of the discussion for us.
Can I say one more thing that isn't a question? You referred to research on what happens when you put major arterials through neighborhoods. We don't have to look it up because we have it in Moscow. When I first moved here, I lived online off A Street. It was quite a lovely neighborhood. There were a lot of single-family houses along there. As A got developed, it is now all rental and it's not, and I'm sure the values of the houses have changed. And the people I know who used to live online and home along that area all moved out. And that's, could happen to Third. Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Amy Ball and I live at 601 East Third Street. And I just have a quick question because most of my questions have been answered by other people. You have referenced some traffic studies, obviously, like there's eight thousand cars on Third near the high school. If a citizen wanted access to that data, how would we go about getting it?
Come talk to our engineering department over in the man building across the parking lot.
Thanks.
That was an easy question. That one had an answer, right? The other one's on the business.
Mills Peterson, 841 Trevoy, Moscow. A question and an observation. The question is about the traffic study, traffic model that the city has, was created a few years ago. How sensitive is it? Could one explore the impact of a stoplight at the Steiner-Lauder highway intersection such that would that cause traffic to flow across and use that lower loop? Or the Walter suggestion of a stop sign, three-way stop that, is the model sensitive enough to tell us anything?
Well, I was not the modeler. Our consultants did that. My experience in modeling was in water systems. And I can tell you when you add features in a water system model that create restriction, then you see increases in flow elsewhere. Traffic models work in a somewhat similar method in that, you know, they're all pipe networks, if you will. Each one's a street. And as there are more restrictions placed like stop signs or stoplights that have a certain amount of delay associated with them, there's an impact. And, you know, as to the sensitivity of that, I can't speak to it because I'm not the modeler and I'm not that familiar with what they use, you know, in the details. I'm sure there's going to be some amount of impact that would be seen in the model as you manipulate those different characteristics. Yeah, it could be done.
And it might show a change, I'll believe that.
It could, yeah.
But does it show a change that reflects the realities in a useful way or, models always do something.
Models are models, as you know, and, you know, there's a certain amount of input you put into it, there's a certain amount of structure that you've built within it, and you try to calibrate it as best you possibly can to what's on the ground with the measurements that you took. that you took at the time, which may represent the reality as a general sense. But the next day is going to be a little different, a little one way or the other. So, yeah, every model has that issue of accuracy, of just truly how good is it at predicting? There's always a plus or minus. And we think we probably have a good model, we have experienced modelers doing it, industry that's been around a long time, the company's been around a long time in doing this kind of thing, so we're pretty comfortable. And we have a reasonable model that will reasonably reflect what we would see with the system that we have. Is it 100% accurate? I'll say no, because no modeler is.
Did you have a question?
I would, I would observe that water follows well-known laws of physics. People, which are essential to a traffic model, don't.
That's a good point, which makes the certainty of behavioral modeling, which is what it is, much lower.
I agree. I would think that the model might do better if you explored moving the high school from its current location to its proposed location out on Mountain View, in terms of, yes, we just move 500 cars from one place to another, as opposed to a stop sign. I mean, that's just speculation.
Yes and no, because you've moved the activity center.
Right.
So that, what you would see is certainly a change. You know, and to continue the parallel of the water system, you know, if you turn on a whole bunch of fire hydrants in one neighborhood, the flow changes, right? The reservoirs drain, the wells turn on, whatever. Same thing with the traffic model. If you put a big activity center in one quadrant of the city, the flow is going to change. So, yeah, that happens. And, you know, is it sensitive enough to say, if we dropped in a three-way stop at Hayes and Sixth, that we'll see a result in the model? I don't know that it's quite that accurate, but again, I'm not that familiar with the detail.
So my observation goes back to the theme of my presentation, was it a month ago? Your comments about the arterials, newer design standards for arterials, the example on White Avenue, on Joseph, where there are no driveways. And so you have a street and an arterial separated by a lot. Instead of having a double-loaded street, you've got a street with two furnaces. Right. And the implications, then, of the number of lane miles passing a given lot, the tax resources to pay for the maintenance of the two streets. If it was a street and an alley, it would be a different mix than if it's two streets. And just thinking aloud about, hmm, those are some interesting implications, as you make an arterial and make it bypass, in a sense, because it doesn't have driveways, a series of lots, it becomes a citywide burden, as opposed to residential street, which may be able, conceptually, to be closer to being paid for by the residences that confront it. So just kind of an observation, not that.
And I should let you know that of those property taxes that you pay on your lots, very little of it goes to the street system.
Oh, I know that.
Not everybody knows that. They think that, you know, if we build more residential houses, it will help pay for those streets. Most of the streets' department funding comes from highway and road and bridge tax distributed by the state. So when you pay for gas, some of that comes back here. But very small quantities of the property tax go to the operation of the street department. There's other funding sources. Occasionally, you'll get some money out of general fund that'll fund the street improvement. At College, for instance, you know, some general fund, which was tax money, it went into that. But in a just annual basis, year to year to year, it's gas tax, it's utility tax that you pay on electric and natural gas, that pays for the street operations.
But what we're seeing is that's not keeping up with.
It never does.
The scale.
It never does, yeah.
So we're going to be looking somewhere else for those funds.
That's true.
Anybody else? Okay, any commissioner questions, final questions for Les? We want to thank you for coming. It's been very informative.
You've been very informative.
Les, the only thing I would request is, if it would be possible for us to get the level of service data for Sixth Street and Third Street and D Street?
Okay, yeah, we can pull the, like I say, it was all done at intersections. We can pull those and I'll get them to Mike.
So it's variable along there, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Les.
Okay, where are we? Thank you for members of the public team participating. Appreciate it. Okay, so item six, the 2017 Commission's survey, and we had talked last time about having people submit questions to Mike. I don't know, I know I submitted one, I don't know what else, other ones you received, but we talked about some potential topics.
You know, Wendy asked me to think about something to do with a question on traffic, maybe on streets, our collector streets or what have you. But I find it really difficult. I don't know if any of you could think about this and make a better suggestion. I don't know how to ask a question. We have seven or eight residential neighborhoods in town that are rather attractive, new and, both new and old. And the old neighborhood is the one that people like to drive through more than most of the other ones. But as you try and put a question together about traffic, we see that this word, the words, you can't use the word collector and arterial in a question because no one knows what it means. Les doesn't seem to know, so duh. In other words, it's hard to know what a question would be about traffic. Do you want more traffic in your residential neighborhood? Well, I think almost everybody would say no.
I think it would be more a question, perhaps, around the subject of mitigating the impact. And I don't know what that would be, but there's many strategies to do that, that you could start exploring, listing the question, that people would favor or not favor. I don't, that would be one take on it.
Anyway, I'm throwing that out. There is some worth thinking about, that neighborhood question, but I couldn't, because I immediately wanted to go to a collector or arterial. And I have a view of what I think those are, but I don't think people think in those terms. And it doesn't make sense to try and use that, what would we? So it seems hard to come up with a question that's meaning, meaningful.
Well, we're allowed to question, so I guess if we look at sort of what the range of options of types of topics for the questions, that would be helpful to kind of narrow it down, maybe to the two that were allowed. And, you know, hopefully, some of you have some thoughts on that. I mean.
I guess had we come up with, we thought parking was one?
Well, we had thrown out some ideas last time, but we hadn't really come up with a focus of what some, you know, it seems important to tie it to our comprehensive planning process, since we're in the middle of it. So whatever questions we ask seem to need to relate to that. Or it would be better if they did, so we'd have some data, citizen data.
Or upcoming projects that, you know, we could envision, so.
Right. So I just threw, you know, there's been so much discussion about downtown parking that I sent this one to Mike, and we haven't really figured out how it might more directly address the conference plan. But, you know, for 15 years, I've listened to my husband complain about a parking problem downtown, and nobody uses downtown because there's a parking problem. And I've never agreed with him until now. And all of a sudden, I do. And I walk there a lot, but when I try to drive, it's pretty full during the day, and the capacity is pretty taxed, you know? So, and that's my perception, but it's also my experience. And it's not any kind of scientific data collection. But at any rate, so I was trying to craft a question around that, what strategies people might support in helping to address or increase capacity of parking. And, you know, and so I'll let you take it from there.
Well, we have some things that we can control, right? We have zoning code, parking regulations. So just looking at the things in the comp plan, we have a recommendation that, you know, some, maybe all new development downtown in central business has some type of parking requirement, or you pay a fee in lieu of. And you think about that, and, you know, the fee in lieu of would go towards maybe a structured, you know, parking garage.
In 100 years.
In 100, but it would never pay, you know, you charge a fee in lieu of, and it would just sit in an account, and it would never get to that point where we'd be able to purchase a parking garage. You know, there's other recommendations in the comp plan right now that talk about requiring some amount of parking for those uses that aren't necessarily retail or, you know, commercial, like hotels or residential. So you build a residential complex above a commercial space, then the residents are required to provide parking spaces for the tenants of that. And so, you know, those are some of the recommendations right now, and whether or not we have public support for any of those, or whether or not we want to just remove those, because, you know, really downtown areas, we're, you know, we're trying to promote that urban environment, and, you know, usually parking's the biggest impediment to that. And whether or not, you know, how we balance the, you know, right to know, you know, have everybody have a parking space when they go downtown, or require, you know, parking as part of any new development in the downtown area is, you know, I guess kind of a balancing act.
Either of you downtown guys have a view on parking? Do you think, how are you feeling about parking, since your place is kind of in the middle of town?
It's ebb and flow. Sometimes there's parking and sometimes there's not. I mean, it's, the busier, the busier it is, obviously, is, you know, and schools in, it's obviously harder to get a parking place downtown. There is a parking problem. I think it's going to get worse before it gets better. With everything we already have in the pipeline right now, I think it's going to get worse. Because I don't think it's been addressed as it should have. And we keep letting buildings go up with less parking, and I just think it's, it's going to get worse before it gets better.
You guys own a parking lot.
We've got a lot behind the building, which is generally full by about nine o'clock, but it, I mean, you can always find a place to park back there. In my experience, you can always, I've never not found a place to park downtown, it's just a question of how close you are to where you want to go. So I think that.
And how much you want to drive around.
Well, I think it's the increased capacity of people driving, hunting and searching for parking that increases the whole traffic cycle. And, you know, whether you walk five blocks doesn't matter if you ultimately find a place to park, but you've added all those trips going up and down the street.
It's not the walking to the place, it's finding, it's the time finding a parking place.
Well, I think that's, I mean, I think it goes back, you know, again, I think some of it's perception and some of it's expectation. I don't drive around looking for a spot because I, my expectations are set. I know that, you know, that's not going to help, but clearly, other people are driving around playing the, you know, the parking lot, hoping they find a spot. So I don't, it's kind of the, well, you know, all over the city, we provide off-street parking, basically unlimited, except for downtown where it's three hours, which, you know, even if you work downtown, you can park there a long time and take up, take up space that a customer might take up. I think we probably, you get more of what you subsidize. If you subsidize three-hour parking, you're going to get people who park there for three hours. If you narrow that window, that's going to mean people are going to have to move around a little more. And I don't know that that's going to affect, I mean, that would be an interesting result of the survey. Is that going to affect patrons downtown more, or is it going to affect people who worked downtown more? I'm not, so, what's that?
I think for the work, probably.
Yeah. And I don't know that that's going to, is that what, do we want to accommodate the people who work down there, or do we want to accommodate the patrons that come down? If the people who work down there are discouraged from parking long-term, then that leaves more room for patrons. I mean, you know, we've got our own lot, you don't, and you don't even have any off-street parking right there, so I'm not sure how that will affect a place like yours, but.
We could ask a question about, how do you feel about two-hour parking?
Well, that's what, yeah, that's what we've got. Reduce the allowable time from three hours to two hours, or put in parking meters that kind of discourage people. So, you know, then you're paying as you go, like the university is doing on the street?
There would be a revolt.
Well, there was on campus, but now the culture has gotten used to it. So, or encourage use of alternative transportation is obviously, you know, a great one, if you can get people to do that. Or construct off-street parking lots at the edges for people who work there, who are going to be parking their car for eight hours, or, you know, four-hour stretches, and permit those, or whatever. Or, you know, I don't, I guess I don't think a municipal parking garage will happen in my lifetime, but it's an option if people want to pay for it. Or maintain the status quo because parking's adequate, you know? And these are kind of like, I saw this as, circle as many as you think apply, you know?
I would probably think to amend the encourage use of alternative transportation, because that is, to me, as I'm reading it, encouraging someone to engage in walking or biking with the current alternative transportation infrastructure, how it is now. I would almost put an option that says, should we enhance the alternative transportation infrastructure? By creating better bike lanes, or reducing the speed on some of our collectors, to make it more bike-friendly? Expanding the size of sidewalks, creating buffers, things like that. So I think that's an option.
Well, I think, as a pretty regular pedestrian for many years, walking to campus from the east side of downtown and going to downtown, I tell you, I walked downtown five times, and here tonight. Getting across the couplet is a bitch. You know, I watched a cop pull somebody over the other, yesterday, for going through the crosswalk when this pedestrian was right in the middle of it. And I heard a masker, you know, you've been around Moscow for a while, do you realize there are a lot? And so, just starting with more enforcement in those crosswalks would, I think, help people feel comfortable going across a couplet that binds downtown on either side. It's a definite barrier. So, you know, that, and I think that's one of the enhancements you're talking about, is safety is a big one, and for bicycles too, obviously.
Bicycling, when you're adjacent to 45 mile an hour traffic, you're not going to have someone who wants to casually take a bike ride do that. It's, you know, so there are certainly enhancements, I think, that we could add that you mentioned.
Yeah, and the bus route opening on the weekends, longer hours, that would be huge.
Yeah, yeah.
That would be big.
Yeah, and people would, for the farmer's market, would probably take the bus more if they could.
Yeah, I was in awe that it wasn't running on the weekend. I didn't do that until just a couple weeks ago, so that would be big.
Did I understand that, as a commission, we get two questions?
We do, and this may not even be a, I just decided to draft.
That was kind of my comment, is that, do we want to spend one of our questions talking about parking when we know that nobody's going to be happy about anything that we put in there? And I think your ideas up there are all merit discussion, but maybe, maybe it's one of those questions that it doesn't matter what we say, it may not give us.
It could be, maybe I'm just venting in the question.
Yeah, well, maybe, I wonder if a better way to approach something like that would be to float an ordinance that, and I can't remember, I don't think it's ordinance that sets the time, but float something that, where you have a public hearing that says, we're going to shorten the time from three hours to two hours and generate a discussion that way and have city council.
Well, it's one of those things, when my wife had her business downtown in the central business district, we always had discussions about this, but she never lost a customer because they couldn't find a place to park.
a customer because they couldn't find a place to park. And the, the other thing is that they had committee upon committee working on the two-hour versus three-hour and the employees and residents, and it never really came to any effective resolution. And so I just kind of feel like us talking about parking may not be the.
Gotcha, yeah. So, yes, Walter.
The Transportation Commission in 2006, I think, spent one year talking about downtown parking.
Oh.
Twenty-three recommendations that came out of there.
Oh, my goodness.
So, no, not, nothing ever came of it. They came to the city council, I think two or three things were adopted and a vote to change some of downtown Main Street from three to two hours failed on a mayor's tie-breaking vote.
Yeah, and that was when Walt, when, no, not, not Comstock, I'm sorry. Why can't I think of who I'm talking about? Our, Wayne Kraus still had his business where he was rotating cars on the streets, so he did.
But he had, he had just left that and got on the city council.
But he understood that need and that problem, yeah.
But we've been through all of this. It may have changed in the last 11 years or, yeah, 11 years slightly, but not a lot. I went to downtown to eat Chinese tonight before this meeting. I saw a spot and it was a block away from the Chinese restaurant. I kept driving looking for one closer. I went around the block and ended up going back to the one I saw the first time. It's, it's people. It's, it's what we do. We will park at the mall as long as we can see the mall door, but we won't park more than five spaces away from the door to the business we're trying to go onto on Main Street. It's all fun and games as far as I'm concerned because it's the same story and has been for 30 years. The good part, as somebody said earlier, is people think we've got a parking problem. Go to Pullman, park anywhere.
Yeah.
We have people down there. So there are spaces in the back lots all during the day, less surveyed in April because we're looking at, at selling more permits to move more employees to the back lots. But there are spaces back there. You just can't get on Main Street at the front door of where you want to go.
I don't honestly try, I like to walk, so I don't try to do that, but I've gone cruising down around the.
Finish this topic I spent way too much time on because I was chairman of that commission.
Yeah.
The merchants say that the customers won't walk more than a half a block to get to their business. The customers say they will walk up to two blocks to get to a particular business. When we asked the merchants what the problem is, the answer was the same as Pogo's. It is us because the owners, managers and employees park in front of the businesses in many, many cases and then complain, there's no parking for my customer.
That's why the reduction from three hours to two hours, I think, is the solution. Anyway, so let's nix the parking ideas. Does anybody else have any other ideas? Does anybody have any other ideas?
Well, I got Brock's.
Okay.
Those were just ideas. Like, I really wish we could hear the other commissions so we don't waste one.
Well, affordable housing hasn't talked about theirs yet because they haven't had a meeting, but I did go back and look at kind of the examples of the questions that they had, you know, over the years. And there is a little bit of overlap there.
On repetition too.
Yeah. So that kind of gets at it, you know, should allow higher density, to allow, promote affordability.
Do you think we should have a basketball arena? You do wonder if we have any problems that it's so hard for us to think of a question.
We're just a perfect community, so let's move on to the next agenda and skip the survey this year.
We just asked why the quality of life in the citizen survey is 95% and planning and zoning comes in at 50%.
Yeah, we're not a popular commission. People perceive us to being able to solve problems that city council is responsible for, so.
Yeah, we don't, you know, it's always an option to not submitting questions. We don't, we can't find some, so.
Well, I definitely think we should submit something.
I think that the second one is too vague and you'd have to kind of really explain what you mean because I think most people look at, sure, yeah, it's important at the city, you know.
When do we have to have these in?
I think we only have another month, right?
Yeah, we have till, well, I think the end of August, early September.
Oh, so we have a couple of weeks, well.
Well, we're not going to have a meeting next time and then we'll have a first meeting in Au, maybe two meetings in August that we.
And I think Brock, last time you brought up climate change in relation to the aquifer and water supply or was that you or somebody?
No, I said something to the extent that I agreed that it was important to note that climate change was important, but that our aquifer situation was more pressing.
So I'm trying, yeah, in terms of planning and zoning impacting water infrastructure.
Yeah, I certainly agree with you too. It is, but I don't know the water conservation, some conservation, but solving the water issue is probably not in planning and zoning, so it's a political issue for sure.
Mike had a good one. I just remembered your tiny house thing, which shocked me if I'm understanding this properly, that in Moscow, we consider something to be, what, there's a square foot minimum, right, of a thousand square feet?
Well, yeah, I mean, we've get, it's something that we get questions on pretty frequently because it's popular right now of tiny houses, right? And it's something I think a lot of communities are struggling with because it's pretty affordable housing and they're usually transportable on a some type of chassis so I can, you know, roll it over to my buddy's house and put it in the backyard and live there for, you know, a certain period of time. Some cities I've seen, you know, addressing homeless situations by parking them in public parking spaces on the street. And so I think with, you know, large college community, we've seen a lot of interest in some pretty affordable housing and going towards tiny homes.
So Italian, that's your question and then?
And it's, you know, I mean, it, right now, they're, they're really caught in between on our ordinances because if they come in on a chassis, you know, a lot of them are manufactured off-site and then they come on-site. And what we would declare at that point, if it's on a chassis and it sits off-site, it would usually be an RV, which could only be in an RV park in, in the city. And they're also limited to six months out of the year, so it's not like full-time residence. If it comes in on maybe a flatbed truck and it's manufactured off-site, you know, coming on-site, then we declare it as a manufactured home. We allow manufactured homes in Moscow, which are different than mobile homes, but they have to be at least a thousand square feet in size. They have to have a permanent concrete foundation under.
Well, I can see the second, but why the first?
What's that?
Well, I can see the concrete foundation being a requirement for permanence, but why is it, why does square footage matter? Do you have any idea why?
Well, it's because we allow them everywhere in town except for historic neighborhoods. And in order to, you know, probably at the time, it's probably been in our codes for quite a while, but, you know, so they didn't get something like a single-wide manufactured home in a residential neighborhood. A lot of the manufactured homes, you can't tell that they're manufactured. There's like up in Hayden, they, I think they have a big plant that manufactures them and they're high, of higher quality. And so, you know, they're looking at something that, you know, that I think probably worried that maybe it would qualify as a, a single-wide mobile home that you could put on a residential lot in town. And I believe that's probably why they had the thousand-square-foot restriction in there. And so, you know, I mean, that, that seemed to have worked out fairly well in residential neighborhoods to have that, you know, definition of a manufactured home. And, but it was before tiny homes were a thing, right? So we didn't, you know, didn't need to address that. You know, and then somebody could stick build one on-site, so if you wanted to, you know, have an R4 lot or, you know, a lot where you're able to get another single-family dwelling, you could build one on-site. But we require all the same connections as like a single-family home, so you require a water meter, electrical meter, run all independent water sewer lines to it. And by the time you put in all that infrastructure and the meters, you end up with probably the cost that outweighs the cost that you had building. So, you know, consequently, we really haven't seen any of them here and whether or not we, you know, need to go out of our way to allow them here is, you know, I guess a question. But it, yeah, it's something that, you know, I think they're stuck kind of in this limbo in a lot of communities because, you know, zoning codes and building codes really don't address them. I know the state building code, Division of Building Safety is actually looking at having an insert in the building code that addresses strictly tiny homes, so.
Would they be on smaller lots that would be part of that equation, so, but the setback ratio would be the same?
Yeah, everything, well, it, it would, it could be a variety of things. I mean, we get a lot of interest with a lot of the mobile home parks on Plusever Drive, they're in the process of kind of transitioning maybe into something else. And, you know, some of them, we're looking at going towards RV parks as they're kind of cycling through a lot of the older mobile homes that you either have to rehab, there's a certain date, 1978, where if you have a mobile home that's of that vintage, you can't put it in another location. It has to either be rehabbed or it just has to be demolished. And so a lot of, you know, what you have happen with tiny homes is they're looking at, you know, bypassing all the separate utilities and the connections and going, you know, wanting to go towards more of a mobile home park only with a kind of a tiny home park. Because you bypass those connections with mobile home parks because they have individual mains that loop through the park and then they have the private connections that go off. And a lot of times there's no individual meters or anything like that. They get charged a flat rate for everybody in the park for electricity and water. And so, you know, that cuts out all the expensive costs and the general facilities charges of all, you know, all these single-family dwellings. And so, you know, it's just something that, you know, I think about questions that we get asked all the time that, you know, we could look at addressing. I mean, there are options for stick building it, you know, building it on-site and then putting all the meters and connections on there. It's just been overly, you know, cost prohibitive in order to do that. And so, you know, it seems to be quite a bit of interest and, you know, we just don't have a great way of addressing them. You know, it's kind of at the forefront because a lot of other communities are looking at doing the same thing and it's usually the larger communities that, you know, are looking at passing ordinances, but, yeah, it's, you know, and whether it's just popular right now and, and, you know, it won't be popular in another couple of years, it's hard, hard to say, but.
Has anybody tried to do it as a PUD?
That would be one of the options is, is to go through a PUD.
Clustered development?
Yeah, we, we've talked to, yeah, and so like an R4 lot, you could do something similar because we allow multiple structures on a single piece of property. It's just that we still require all the individual service lines and meters and connections. We don't allow, you know, like mobile home park ordinances and RV park ordinances. We specifically allow the shared utility services in those developments. So if we were to do something like that, it would be, you know, maybe addressing the park situation where you could have multiple, you know, tiny homes in a single park and allow, you know, treat them similarly to a mobile home park. You know, it could be something as simple as, you know, mobile home slash tiny home park type, type of thing. But it would just need to be changed in our, our zoning code.
Could you model a question after the accessory dwelling and a type of question that was asked a few years ago that led to that policy? I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, no.
I don't know if that would.
Yeah, I think it'd be more of, maybe not just my neighborhood, but more of a community-wide, you know, allowing them in cer, just like we do mobile home parks in certain areas. Or, you know, I mean, maybe clearing up the whole manufactured home restriction for square footage and things like that in order to, you know, allow some inclusion in neighborhoods.
To interrupt you.
Well, I was just thinking that this might be a worthwhile question if we could frame it correctly. I don't know how many people would understand what a tiny house is, but if you could describe it, because they're usually what, about 800 square feet, maybe even a little less sometimes? Some of them in the 500.
Yeah, usually looking 300 to.
But maybe describe it and then the idea about having a tiny home park where you could construct it in a way that wouldn't require the foundation and the, so that it would be affordable. Some interest in, I don't know where you would put those. Could you, could you put something like that in an R4 zone or would you have to have special zoning? I don't know, I, I kind of wouldn't mind seeing a question that would at least somehow gauge a little bit what, what the interest might be out there and then we would know how to approach it.
Yeah, good idea.
So who wants to word it?
I could, I could.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, that would be good.
Can I say?
Yes, yes.
Question or something like that? The idea of having a tiny home park, like an RV park, is one thing and sounds really interesting to me, but the ideal of, my buddy's going to take a tiny home and put it in my backyard is, is horrible because I don't want to live in a tent city where instead of tents, it's tiny homes. And you've already gone through this with accessory dwellings where, and so you're just sort of reinventing the wheel, it's using a tiny home instead of accessory dwelling. So I don't see the point of doing it right now. So I'm probably giving you a little bit of feedback, not knowing where you're going, but.
Well, I would think, yeah, I mean, I guess in cluster development or mobile home parks, but also, I know Cordillane, because they've hit up against their urban boundaries in every direction, they've started to allow 25-foot lots for residential development, for example. And that, you know, if you had a tiny home on a 25. I, I'm remodeling a house in Seattle that I've owned for 40 years right now that's only 500 square feet and, you know, it looks like a house and every house around it is about the same size and they were built, you know, in the 40s when people didn't need huge mansions. And so it, it was shocking to me that that would be considered a tiny home. I think of a tiny home as two to 300 square feet, which is what the kind of movement is now with these little, almost like trailer-type little houses where you have a bunk above your kitchen or something like that. I mean, they're really tiny, so, so I don't, yeah. So I was surprised we had that limitation of a thousand square.
Can we integrate it with granny flat?
Well, that, that's the accessory dwelling.
Yeah.
And we already, yeah.
Well, can a, can a accessory dwelling be a tiny home?
It has to be under 600 square feet.
Yeah.
So by the definition of tiny home.
Yeah, I mean, you could build one on-site that, that looks like a tiny home and call it an accessory dwelling unit and if it's eligible for an ADU, then it'd be allowed.
Right.
It's just the whole.
We don't have a minimum footprint, we have a maximum.
Yeah, it's just the whole thing of, you know, coming off-site and putting it on-site in your backyard as an ADU would be the prohibitive factor. But you can build it on your property and as long as it meets our ADU regulations, you could call it a ADU.
Why can't you do it off-site?
Because we declared a manufactured home at that point, and then it's got to meet the, you know, foundation, 1,000 square foot requirement, and things like that.
Well, I propose that you develop that question, and Brock, you sort of elaborate in more detail on what these two questions would really mean, because I, right now, they're too big in my brain, I can't, and maybe I'm just tired from looking at it, going, okay, well, yeah, sure. Yeah, so, maybe you could develop the questions a little more.
I was thinking about that, and I was also maybe thinking, I don't know what Moscow's experience has been with short-term rentals, like Airbnb and things like that, but it would be interesting to gauge, like, the population, how many of them are utilizing Airbnb rentals, or short-term?
VRBO, too.
Or how many are participating? Just to have that data, too.
Well, you know what's interesting, in places that have more tourism, the planning and zoning has started to regulate. Like, I know we rent a house in Cayucas a lot of times in California, and they, the city ordinances limit, you can only have one within 200 feet of another one, and the lots are really small, they're like 50-foot lots, so you're, so, you know, it's only a couple per block, and that is so that they don't sort of end up with the whole community just being VRBOs, like, I mean, oh, you have to go to a month-long rental, I mean, you have to go to a month-long. You can't do overnight hotel kind of, you know, short-term rentals.
Well, at the same point, ended up doing, they had a number of them that were existence, and they gave them up to a certain point to register, because they passed an ordinance on it, and then you had to be, I think, within a certain distance of another one, so...
So it's first come, first served.
Yeah, if the ordinance passed, and you had one, and somebody was, you know, wanted to open up one less than the distance away, and they weren't allowed to do it. Which I don't know if we have a problem now, I mean, we don't regulate short-term rental now, and we really haven't had any issues with it in the past. You know, a lot of people rent out their room or home for game day, you know, for big weekends here, for mom's or dad's weekends, graduation. And we haven't really had a whole lot of complaints or issues with it, so...
So... One might ask a question of whether, and do we have any information on how many short-term rentals there are around?
Yeah, you can go out to the websites, VRBO, or Airbnb.
You know, one could ask people whether they have experienced any problems with the existence of this current level of short-term rentals.
Good.
I haven't heard any complaints.
Yeah, I haven't either. I don't personally think it's an issue like it is, where there's more tourism.
People only want to come to Moscow six times a year.
We're still the unknown, anyway.
We're not on a major tourist path.
Okay, so, if you think of any more questions, that, you know, bring them to the next meeting. So, we are on item seven, it's 10 o'clock, what do you want to do? I think, I'm looking around, and everybody looks at half masks. Yeah, okay, there's no vote, I'm just clearing. Thank you, Walt.